Ready when you are.
Okay, we are on folks. It's Tuesday, May 28th. And it's a nice snowy May 28th. And let's just get started. Up first, we have staff community presentations and it's Board of Social Services 2019 First Quarter Update.
So I think we need to make a motion to enter into and I'm sorry, I should have that in here, so I apologize.
So we need a motion to go into the Board of Social Services. Anybody?
Second.
Got to move. We've got a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Great, thank you.
Am I the Chair of the Board of Social Services?
You are. You be the Chair of the Social Services, yeah. So I'm Nan Sundin. I'm the Human Services Director and in Picking County, we call social services "human services." And the law requires that the Board of County Commissioners convene as a Board of Social Services and approve expenditures, quarterly expenditures and payrolls. We use this time to give you updates about other things that you might run into when you go to Denver or travel around regionally. So the Human Services Team is here to give those updates. We're gonna just start with introductions. Kelly, do you wanna?
Yes. Kelly Pazar, Financial Analyst for Human Services.
Chad Federowitz, Manager of Senior Services.
Sam Landerkasper, I manage Economic Assistance.
I'm Matt McGon. I manage our Adult and Family Services.
Chelsea Carnoli, I'm the new Adult and Family caseworker with Child Welfare.
Great, welcome. Glad to have you here.
Thanks. So Human Services is all of these departments and it also includes child support services, which is done by Garfield County for us on a regional basis. And it also includes long-term care support services, which is a Medicaid program that supports people who are in long-term care and Garfield County does that for us as well. In addition, Garfield County licenses our home childcare homes. So that's sort of the extent of Human Services in Picking County. We're gonna start with, if I can make this work. I completely my fault that this expenditure chart got dropped out of the memo and I apologize. We have handed out a copy of it for you. I know that Steve likes to look at the percentages. You are asked to approve the expenditures of the quarter, which are also in that second chart. So I think you can still take the action, but we'll let Kelly go through this and see if you're comfortable taking an action approving the expenditures.
Good afternoon. The chart that you were handed shows the county's budget for this year, January to March, for the first quarter, which as a reminder, is different than the state fiscal year budget that we work from, that is July 1st to June 30th. So this is just our budget. The first column that says budget, that's our budget that you approved. And then the actuals. And where we're following this year is, this quarter, is very good so far. The revenue is just a little bit above average at 26 percent. We would expect to be at 25 percent at this point in the year. And the expenditure is slightly lower at 22 percent. And there's something else I wanted to point out too. Like Steve, who looks at these numbers so thoroughly, sometimes has questions about, especially childcare and TANF, why don't the expenditures match what Sam reports in the payrolls, which you'll see further on. And I wanted to explain and maybe I'll put a comment in here going forward, so it's always there, that the admin, the staff salaries and overhead and things like that, aren't reported specifically on the expenditures line in the TANF and the childcare sections. They're at the top section where it says admin. So all the salaries for those two programs are up top. Sometimes there will be a little bit reflected on our general ledger here from other random moment sampling, which I won't get into now, sorry I even mentioned that. But sometimes a little bit of expenditures can sneak in there. So just wanted to make sure you understand that those numbers won't always match, but we, Sam and I do sit down and reconcile every month to make sure that we know where the differences lie. This month, this quarter, there is not a difference in childcare, but there's a little bit of a difference in the TANF amount, the expenditures.
Between expenditures and payrolls?
Between, yes, thank you. Between expenditures and payrolls. Another thing I wanted to point out when we move to the second chart, the total expenditures by quarter is that are, I put some notes at the top of that chart which hadn't been there before. So the total expenditures that you see here for quarter one, they could include, they do include direct client benefits, there could also be some admin costs in there and overhead costs. And the totals that you see could be net of any recoveries that we get back from the state or adjustments. And they don't always necessarily align here, again, with the quarterly payrolls, because these are going off of our county's general ledger, not necessarily everything that happened at the state level. Any questions on that? That was a lot.
I wanna tell me if I missed this while I was thinking about something else.
Is your mic on?
Did you talk about childcare?
The allocation?
Yeah.
Our, our child allocation revenue number on the budget to actuals that I showed you is 248,000. That number includes, we budgeted this year for a certain amount of our allocation that we got, an amount that we got from the state. And then we also budgeted additional funds that we were gonna purchase. So this number here does include purchases and we purchased $75,000 from Kit Carson County for our childcare.
So show me where the 75,000?
It's not separate. It's total in the childcare revenue of 248,000 that we budgeted for. So that's the number we budgeted.
So the allocation was about, I think, 163,000, 164,000. And what happens is interesting, the state, as soon as you buy the dollars, the state makes that your allocation. And in all the reports now, it says our allocation is 248,061 dollars. We frequently give them feedback that we think that is, misrepresents the fact that we bought 75,000, but we can't change it. So what Kelly did was she took it off the settlement papers and I just wanted to make sure you guys were clear that it includes 75,000 we bought.
And this is 75,000, just so I know the ratio is five to one or something?
It's 10 to, yeah, 10 to one. It's like almost 11 cents on the dollar.
By having to include it in what it looks like we were given, gives them credit for giving us that amount of money when they didn't really give us that amount of money.
I know and I wish, if I could wave my magic wand, all of the allocation would be based on utilization, but it's not. It's based on poverty and other things. So anyway, it's, it just is a point of clarification there. We're still doing a good job sitting well and it's, we're closed out now for the state fiscal year. And then of course, next year, we'll have to look at buying dollars again.
Okay, right.
Okay?
Okay, thanks.
Any questions about the expenditures? Okay, so...
You have to have a motion.
Mm-hmm, please make a motion.
Reach right now.
Now make a motion to approve the 2019 first quarter.
Second?
Excellent.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Great.
Do we, we don't need to do the budgets to actuals, so just it's the only one we need to approve formally.
That's the first one and then Sam, Sam will get into the payrolls, but all you need to approve are the expenditures and the payrolls. And remember, it's expenditures for the traditional human services. We're not looking at senior services. We're not looking at Healthy Community Fund. It's just the ones that you are obligated to approve, to assure that nobody's taking any of the money and doing anything untoward. Okay, so, thank you.
We're trusting you.
Thank you. Thanks, Kelly.
You're welcome.
All right, so Sam?
Sorry, to that end, do you guys, are you guys audited?
Constantly.
Either externally or by the state.
The county's audited and we go through that big audit and then the state audits us every three years for certain programs and Adult and Family Services is audited once a year for out-of-home placement, I think, and we're just audited all the time, constantly. Yeah, yep.
Good question.
Some are case audits and some are financial audits. They're different.
So Sam's up next.
Yep. So we've got a few things to talk about today as far as economic assistance is concerned. The first thing we wanted to bring to your attention is a quarterly report that we've started getting from the Colorado Workforce Center. The Colorado Workforce Center is a Department of Labor and Employment Department that provides work services for employers as well as residents of the region. They work on a regional basis. And we've been trying to figure out how we can work more closely with them. That's ongoing. Their main office closest to us is based out of Glenwood Springs. So trying to bring those services into Picking County is something we're working on. But they did provide us with some interesting information, this workforce labor market summary as far as Picking County is concerned. It's nice to finally see represented in actual numbers the peaks and valleys that we know that we have here, especially in our shoulder seasons. It's something we've always seen represented in increased or decreased applications for our programs, but to get some real data around it is nice. It was also interesting to see the cost of living. We all know it's high in Picking County, but confirming that it's the highest in the state of Colorado and how that represents difficulties for our residents. So some of the numbers that they pulled out of there, we, in March, we had approximately 309 unemployed individuals, but 1,085 job postings, which sounds as if we would just have everybody employed, but in reality, we know in this area, we contend with folks coming in from outside of Picking County to take up some of these jobs. So what we're seeing is, we're seeing that we've got some people here in Picking County who aren't finding the right kind of work possibly for themselves in our market. Oh, and we're finding that employers are in need of work, so creating that demand there. It was also interesting to see that 27 of the 50 top jobs in Picking County don't meet these self-sufficiency standards that we talk about in a little bit, which from a report from, I believe it was the Center for Law and Policy, that the minimum requirements for a household of two, meaning one parent, one child, for self-sufficiency standard reaches 33.75 an hour or $71,000 annually, which is 433 percent of the federal poverty guidelines, which none of our programs touch that. They don't even get close. The Child Health Plan Plus is the only one that gets near 400 percent of the federal poverty level. But they called out some specific areas where these jobs don't meet that, which as we know in our economy are a lot of the jobs, retail, food services and hospitality, as well as some entry-level healthcare jobs. So it just kind of paints a picture of some of the challenges that our residents face and in particular with economic assistance, you know, the folks that are coming through our doors. So we just wanted to present that information.
Can I just add onto that? We had a meeting, was it just last week?
Just last week.
With Jessica, who's the Colorado Workforce person that's out of Steamboat. She has a...
Rural Resort Region Director.
Yeah, Rural Resort Region. And for some reason, I just learned at that meeting we had that we no longer have our quarterly meetings, which Nan and I used to go sit in a room and wonder why we were there and what was actually happening, so...
But we had fun.
We had, Nan had fun, because we would go on mute and we would chat while they were having their meeting, catch up on a lot of things. But with, the purpose of this meeting was to really find out what the workforce organization could actually be doing here in Picking County. They kept saying, well, we have a place in Glenwood. We're like, here in Picking County? That's Garfield County, you know, across through Eagle County to get to. So it was a very interesting and I think, hopefully, we're gonna come up with some good things. There's some other stuff that came up at the Northwest COG meeting about the workforce, because she's been coming to those meetings and sitting there. But Nan, could you just explain, is it work first?
Employment first.
Employment first.
Yeah.
Work first, employment.
Right. So Employment First is a program that the federal government requires the state to have, that people who have food assistance are given the food assistance, but they have to be in work-related activities unless they are waived out for some reason, like mental health or substance abuse. And for years, we've been exempted from Employment First. We were contiguous with other counties that didn't have enough employment and the state really couldn't manage it and didn't have enough money for all the counties to provide this program, which is really trying to help people find work and get off of public assistance, especially SNAP and TANF, right? SNAP. And so anyway, we were exempted until this year. Last summer, you may remember that we opted to let the state do this program for us. And we're gonna be working on getting information about how many clients did they serve. They're not communicating much with us about the program. We haven't seen a significant change in our SNAP enrollment at all. And, but, but the other counties around us, Garfield, Eagle, Summit, have really developed good work, Employment First programs, where they're doing orientation and training and linking people to internships and the colleges. And so we're a little bit behind the times on that and that's what we're trying to get up to speed on.
Right, and that's one of the things that came out of our conversation the other day, especially when we all went, we haven't even heard what the state's been doing for us here, if they're doing anything here.
Yeah.
So it'll be interesting to see if we can, when we get that first group of numbers back to see what's been happening and where we can go from here.
Yep, right.
Kelly?
George.
Sorry, George?
Okay, thanks.
Pregnant ladies first.
Oh, thank you. So this is my first Board of Social Services meeting. I missed you guys.
Yay.
January at new Commissioner Training, so lovely to see you all. And there's a lot of nomenclature here new to me, so I guess, for me to try and boil this down a little bit, what I'm hearing, and please correct me, is that we have a gap here in Picking County between available employment and filling that employment. And then when filling that employment, employment and sustainability needs at a household level. And so some questions I have then are, are we seeing a large uptake of individuals who have that gap relying on services? And what is the gap of people that could use but aren't taking advantage of, or maybe don't qualify for, the services to close that self-sufficiency gap between their current employment and what we would like to see?
Well, those are a lot of good questions and no easy answers. Most of this information was meant to paint a picture of what we're experiencing here. But to answer your questions, we haven't seen any uptick. We haven't seen a downtick either, even with the economy doing fairly well in our caseloads that we have. Our services are being utilized. However, like I mentioned, most of our services don't meet, so therefore we have that gap. And there are a ton of great nonprofits that we know of that can help people, depending on where they fall within that gap, but it's certainly something that needs to be considered in ongoing conversations about this and how do we reach those people? And in the Economic Assistance Department, that is our primary concern when folks come in who are in need that we can't help, is how do we connect you to the right people to fill those gaps, to get you as much assistance as you need to get closer to that sustainability that you need to have to, you know, have a safe, secure household.
We, I would just add that we are aware that there's a significant gap between people who are eligible for SNAP, food assistance, and the people who are enrolled. Statewide, we get, we're like the worst in the state. The reports say that 88 percent of the people who are eligible for SNAP are not enrolled in Picking County. We think there are a lot of reasons for that. We would really challenge that number, but how would you get it? Is it 40 percent? Is it 50 percent? You know, we are in a resort economy that relies on cash, tips, that people may or may not report. You know, and the other thing is that with SNAP versus Medicaid, people self-declare their income in Medicaid and with SNAP, they have to show, they have to prove their, their income. So there's a couple of reasons why, but we are really focused on trying to find the people who are eligible who are not enrolled. And some of this discussion is we, we know the wages are low. We know that there are 1,000 jobs that are open, so it's, you know, but they're low-wage jobs and they're not moving people out of, into self-sufficiency. And so really, the bigger conversation with workforce or in the community is, is potentially wage reform, but also, you know, looking for higher-level jobs that people can take that would have them be self-sufficient.
Great, thank you.
Now in Colorado, communities can advocate for wage reform. Yeah, right.
George?
Yeah, more of a comment, but I understand the, sort of the nexus of trying to identify where the gap is and provide that safety net. You know, it said 27 of the top 50 jobs in Picking County may not meet standards for self-sufficiency and as you mentioned, Nan, we're, you know, we're resorts, so it's the service sector, not usually the higher-paying jobs. But my comment is, when we think about the number of people who, the number of people that we import into Picking County from Eagle and Garfield County, they're coming up here because they're able to find better-paying jobs in Picking County that allows them to live in relatively close proximity.
Yeah, and also, we, I just did a report to the Aspen Institute and people are working more than one job. One, you know, the average is like 1.3 jobs. So we're, while we're not in the place we were in 2008 where people had two or three jobs, they are, they are still working more than one job to be self-sufficient. So then there's a whole bunch of other social impacts to that, which is the family structure, the family strength, the supervision of children, that kind of stuff.
I mean, as challenging it is for us, I just wonder how more challenging it is for the rest of the growing Fort Valley, those counties, Garfield County and Eagle County.
The self-sufficiency standard here, you can see that Eagle and Garfield are a different color, lighter blue, so it costs less to live there.
Right.
And, and they also make less, right? So, yeah, I think what I really like about the self-sufficiency standard is it's based on several elements, but the, but it accounts for different costs in every county. So it always includes food and transportation and healthcare and childcare. And there's tax, taxes, I think. And those five or six things are measured in every county. And so you can see that it, if you look on the east side of Colorado, way lower cost of living. And, but as you get into the mountains and the resort industry, it's harder.
I mean, one of, again, one of the comments that we hear frequently from some of the Garfield County Commissioners is that Picking County should be doing a better job in terms of housing our workforce. But my retort back to them is, you know, we may be importing workers, but we're exporting paycheck. But my retort back to them is, you know, we may be importing workers, but we're exporting paychecks back to your communities.
Right. It's, you know, this information on the self-sufficiency standard, the county has used it in the past to determine our lowest wage as an employer. And the other thing is that it could be used, as you consider, in housing developments, what category of housing is more needed or less needed? And the income threshold. So this is mainly information for you all to consider and to keep in mind that we are continuing to work on work support strategies and trying to help people have higher-level jobs so they can be self-sufficient, which in a little bit flies in the face of the resort economy.
Steve, any question?
Yeah, just looking at this self-sufficiency standard chart, it's kind of alarming for us because we're the highest-cost place in the whole state. And yet, when we use the Consumer Price Index for figuring out every program that, you know, what level we participate in and everything, we come out on the short end of the stick compared to every other county in the state using the CPI. Is there any, does this figure play into the CPI at all, the SSS figures? Or is this like a whole new metric that this group has done?
It's another metric, yeah, it's a different metric.
And is there any way we could lobby the state or somebody to get, you know, switch over, at least partially, to take these figures into account?
I love that question. We have been using the social, the self-sufficiency standard in allocation discussions. So the childcare allocation is now, has now included on some level the self-sufficiency standard around provider rates, right? Provider rates and also the income eligibility for Picken going up to two sixty-five is directly related to the self-sufficiency standard. So you see slowly but surely the state is incorporating it. Whether or not it got to CPI, I think that would be an interesting discussion in other places. Where else could it be part of the formula of funding or whatever?
Okay.
Okay.
All right, so we were fortunate to receive a grant from the Healthcare Policy and Finance that oversees Medicaid for around thirty-five thousand dollars to develop a program over the last year to address capitation fees. So for anyone who doesn't know, capitation fees are charges made to the Medicaid program for each individual who's enrolled in Medicaid. In Picken County, the capitation fees were, I believe, fifty-six dollars and some odd cents, I don't think I have it in here, per month for each person enrolled. So our idea was that we wanted to look at who are the folks who no longer need to be enrolled in the Medicaid program? And if we could remove them from the rolls, how much money could we save? You know, as something that could hopefully be implemented statewide to increase Medicaid savings. As we were getting into this, we found out that the state had implemented their own program and that their methodology was slightly different from ours. Their program, all of our programs are based off of returned mail, assuming that since someone is not receiving their mail, possibly they're no longer at the address and either their case needs to be updated or their case needs to be closed. So the state's methodology was to take a large batch of returned mail from, I think they said two thousand and sixteen, go through it, make one phone call, and if the person didn't answer their phone, their case was closed.
No message.
No message. We thought in Picken County with the...
We didn't like that.
Right.
If they didn't answer their phone, it's not their phone was disconnected or...
Right, it was no answer.
They call during the day, people are working, just didn't answer, they get cut off. And this is all to save this capitation dollar, right? So it's a big plan of the new director of HICPuff to save the state money.
It's like a great plan if you want to look good, but it's not really a good plan.
Well, so we looked at this and we said, you know, these capitation costs are a huge expense to the state when you look at it over time. But we also wanted to take into consideration that we have folks who move around, maybe people have difficulty getting their mail. So we just wanted to increase the number of attempts we made to reach these people before their cases were closed. So we gave, when we received returned mail, we gave everyone three attempts to respond. We would send, we'd leave a voicemail, we'd send a letter letting them know that we'd received returned mail, we needed their case to be updated. And if we didn't receive a response, their case would be closed. And we figured, we gave them about a month between each attempt at contact. So we just wanted to try to give people that chance in case they were still here and needed their case to remain open, that it would do so. So it was an interesting program. We found that customers responded to the voicemail or the letter thirty times out of a hundred and fifty-two. So twenty percent of the time, people who were called and left a voicemail or sent a letter saying, you need to get in touch with us, were able to return that contact. Of those folks who we contacted, out of the hundred and fifty-two, forty-eight percent, or forty-eight customers, or thirty, about thirty-two percent, said that they needed their case to remain open. So had we just called and not left a message, we'd have closed about thirty percent of the cases erroneously, essentially. Of those folks, eight customers, or about five percent, requested that their case be closed, either for moving out of state or for whatever reason. And twenty-three, so fifteen percent, were sent for referral to closure. So those are the cases where we made our contact attempts, no response was received, and then we closed the case. So I don't think I have the actual figure in here because I hadn't calculated it. At the end of this term, we calculated this out, and this saved almost nine thousand dollars in capitation fees, which was less than we'd expected, but we're really looking at this over time. And that amount, you know, expanded out over time because a lot of people, the way Medicaid's set up now, if you move out of state, your case just keeps re-enrolling automatically. It's the way the system's set up now, unless you would inform us that you need your case closed. So those cases can go on for years. So looking at getting these shut down, you know, saves about sixty bucks a month per person. A household of four, that's two hundred and forty, times twelve, on and on. So and it also, a lot of people we called said, oh, thanks for calling, I moved, can you update my mailing address? So there's also that positive aspect as well, and a lot of people just thanking us for giving them a call to get their case updated. So we found that it was a very successful program and hope that the state likes our methodology. We're actually reporting out on it tomorrow if we can get down the hill.
One piece of information is that when we, we applied for this grant, just as the state was identifying their methodology of one and done is what we call it. One call and you're done. And so we went to the state and asked them to waive us, waive Picken County clients. We're the only county that was waived from that process. And the fact that thirty-two percent of the cases were eligible and were able to remain open is really sort of the secondary primary gain to us is, is really, we could figure out how much time it would have taken us if we had had to reopen those cases when they ended up in the ER and didn't know that they had lost their insurance. So we're very happy with the, and very proud of our work, and we're looking forward to presenting to Director Barnes tomorrow, the HICPuff director.
So if you could just, you know, roll that thirty-two percent over to, you know, to the state's number of returned mail overall.
Yeah.
I think it's huge. I would love to be in that room tomorrow when you present this, and I would love to know how well you were received.
Yeah, we'll let you know.
Proud of it, I think this is what it's all about. And I think especially when you go back and say, this saves us time, therefore it saves us energy and money at the end of the day. Plus, the trauma to those people walking into the ER and being told, hey, you don't have any cover. What, I don't, you know, that in itself is worth the effort.
Yeah.
So thank you, guys.
I know this can be really labor-intensive work, I can relate to these address scrubbing efforts from elections.
Elections.
Yeah. And I would just, I don't know if you're able to use different data sources, but the Elections Department could probably help you get a list. People tend to update quite frequently during big election years. So, you know, twenty eighteen or twenty twenty might be helpful if there's people you can't track down to see if they've actually moved or have a different mailing address or something, just as a suggestion.
Something to consider. You know, the rules require us, when we enroll people, to offer them the opportunity to register to vote. So we're required to have all that paperwork, so it makes sense that we could use some of that data.
Sure.
If they registered, they're different means.
For a national election, that would be great.
And because that you're already required to bring elections into the picture, means they couldn't say, no, it's really not appropriate for you to use elections to research addresses as well, but you already asked us to get them to register to vote, so we already have that connection.
Right, yeah, it's good, good findings here, so we're proud.
I just wish they changed the name. Capitation just doesn't, it just...
Seems like a violent act.
It does, I'm like, what are we, what are we capitating here?
It's all about heads rolling.
The heads are going to roll tomorrow, that's for sure.
When someone moves away and you're able to determine where they moved to, like a forwarding address or something, do you send that information to the county where they're, where they have moved to, if they're still in the state? And do other counties send that kind of information to us?
So generally, if we're holding their case within Picken County, what we'll do when we get that information is update it in the system, and the system will then automatically transfer their case to the corresponding county. When they move out of state, there's not much we can do because they'll need to apply there. That's one thing that a lot of people don't know, they think because Medicaid's a federal program, they can use their Colorado Medicaid in Arizona, which is not the case. So we usually inform them, you know, if you're not planning on coming back, we'd like to close your case, but you should then go and open a case in Arizona or wherever so that you have coverage where you're living. Okay?
Great. Do a SANA update in veterans and then we'll move on.
All right. All right, so a quick update on, and I don't know if we've brought this here before, what's called the Safe and Abundant Nutrition Alliance that we're calling SANA. It is a food security steering committee is what we're calling it. It started out after we hosted a food insecurity, or a food security summit here in Picken County to look at, because we have such an under-enrollment in the SNAP program, we wanted to look at where are these people who aren't getting enrolled? And what are the other supports that they have available to them? And what are the levels of food insecurity here? So we convened a meeting of employers, retailers, nonprofits, government agencies to have a discussion. And what came out of this really was kind of three goals, is that we needed to increase enrollment in the SNAP program as well as WIC, which is Women, Infants, and Children. We needed to help reduce the stigma around accessing assistance, as well as the stigma surrounding poverty. A lot of people don't have a very realistic view on what poverty looks like. And we also had to increase our, the efficiency of the distribution process throughout the region. There's a lot of food that's, what we say, dying on the shelves at our food banks and food pantries or being thrown away. And how do we get that distributed correctly? And we also called to attention the idea that this is a regional effort, because like we said, we import a lot of workers here. We've got people who are here in Picken County who live in Garfield County, but they're here from eight to five. So where are they accessing these food resources? So over the last twelve months, we had a few meetings to discuss these programs. We also got invited to Garfield County's Food Security Summit, which they voiced a lot of the same concerns. And the idea was raised that this should become a regional effort, since we're all, since it's such a similar population that we're serving and the fact that these things do go beyond county boundaries. And we brought that back to the Picken group and folks felt that that was a good idea. So what's happening now with SANA is that it's becoming regional. We are working with Garfield County, and we are also getting funding for a coordinator position. This person is going to work under lift-up as a fiscal agent because we don't want SANA to become another 501(c)(3). We really want it to be an outlet for people to provide input that then forces, you know, pushes change that we need in the area to increase food security. So this coordinator position is going to be organizing these efforts, as well as facilitating communication, organizing events. It's a pretty broad position, but can help with this information that we're gathering. So we, Picken County, have put in some funding for this, as well as Garfield County and other nonprofits to get the position off the ground. The first step with this position will be writing a grant to the Colorado Health Foundation to secure more longer-term funding so that it's established. And then this coordinator will help SANA have large regional meetings where we can gather information, analyze that information, and look at how we can implement these programs to reduce food insecurity. We know that we have the resources, it's really a matter of collaborating together to organize how we provide services, so.
Is your coordinator a full-time position or lift-up? Lift-up is fiscal agent, so they're working for lift-up.
Yes, so the way this works, yes, it will be a full-time position. And the way it works is this larger SANA group will provide the input, the information about what we need to do, where they're seeing gaps in services and things like that. That gets filtered down through an advisory board to the director, who then takes the appropriate action with the coordinator.
Eagle County, since we do border Eagle, have we talked to them?
Yeah, so Eagle County is very interested, and Sam and I are going to be doing a presentation to their Assistant County Manager, Kelly Collier, and probably in the next month, she's on vacation. They weren't able to commit financially in the timeframe that we needed for this grant application or for the action of hiring. But they are still very interested. We are using TANF dollars, so you may remember that, that we get an allocation and we're also allowed to keep up to a hundred thousand in TANF reserves, and we just sit on that money. So we're just going to use five thousand of that, it's a poverty reduction program, we've gotten approval from the state, and we'll likely be able to refill that next year. So we're very hopeful that Eagle will be in with us.
Well, if you need us to give them any encouragement, just let us know.
Great, it always, it can help. I think that it was just timing, and Garfield and Picken were way advanced of Eagle in terms of having these community coalitions. Eagle didn't have it, and so when they were approached to partner, they were being asked, they didn't understand what the scope of the project was.
Dylan?
Can you give a rundown of who in Picken County is experiencing food insecurity and what that might be eligible if it isn't participating?
So one interesting thing we talk about with food insecurity is it's not just hungry people. I think it gets rolled into that a lot. Food insecurity has impacts that go far beyond just hunger. Negative health outcomes, mental behavioral health issues, economic impact on the area. It's estimated that Colorado loses about three point zero five billion dollars annually to food insecurity and lost wages from people who aren't able to go to work. So getting a picture of who is food insecure in Picken County and the region is really something that we hope to solidify. We know that it's a significant portion of the population, according to the Colorado Blueprint, and hunger, one in ten Coloradans is food insecure. And, you know, it's an even heavier impact on children and older adults as well. So getting a clear picture of who those folks are beyond just the statistical numbers is important, identifying those populations so that then we can tailor these programs to really address that.
I think if you think about the fact that twenty-five percent of our population lives at or below two hundred percent of poverty, right? That's four thousand people. Um, that's 4,000 people. 4,000 people in our community don't have enough money to pay for those basic things that I mentioned before, food, health, transportation, housing, right? That, those are the, the, those are the people that we need to find. Um, in the, huh, in the blueprint report that the state produced, they identified, as Sam said, children and older adults as a primary, but also college students. Um, and so, um, it will be really important for us to make a connection with CMC, right?
Thank you.
Sam, I'd love to hear a little bit about the distribution system and the technology. I know there was a grant application to buy a truck at one point to, to do the food distribution network. How, how's all that going?
So, there's a number of things going on. Um, once we went regional, we had to reassess how that program was going to move forward. So, what Greg's talking about is we had, prior to this going regional, the Pickin County version of SANA had discussed ways to improve our distribution system. Uh, one of the things that came out of those discussions was a refrigerated truck to facilitate delivery because all of these organizations who do food distribution really are depending on volunteers at this point, which limits what kind of foods you can transport, whether you can depend on that. So, we, as a group, came up with an idea saying, well, if there was a available vehicle that could regularly make deliveries and could refrigerate foods, uh, even store foods, that would help this process. And we also said, well, how is this gonna communicate? So, we started looking at an app. Um, and we were speaking with a company called 86 Borders who does a great app out in San Francisco for meals on wheels. So, it involves tracking, uh, inventory, things like that. Now, this has kind of gotten complicated as we regionalize because Food Bank of the Rockies, um, presented us with an app that exists. So, this 86 Borders, they can develop an app, um, at a very reasonable price. So, it's something we were looking at, we were very excited about. But then Food Bank comes to the table and says, we have this app that does similar functionality, and we're looking at how that's gonna fit into the system. So, we've held off on asking for a vehicle because, one, a lot of funders don't wanna fund a vehicle. They, uh, we, we also have discussed contracting services for that. But I think that needs to be wait, uh, held until this regional group is able to get together and discuss the regional needs and see where that fits. Because we do want this to be a collaborative effort. We don't wanna force a solution onto, um, a larger group of people if it doesn't fit for them. But it's still, uh, di- food distribution is one of those main goals that we have. And, uh, a truck or some sort of delivery services seems to be something that would be very helpful.
Well, maybe Garfield will have some solutions there for that, too.
Right.
I like the term that I've been reading, food rescue. So, think about all the restaurants and hotels and places that have food that, um, and grocery stores that have too much food and have to throw it away. What Sam is talking about in distribution is having, being able to pick up that food and get it to places where people can have access to it and it doesn't go to waste. There's also a big effort at, um, really trying to, um, connect with locally grown food. And, um, so, that, that's a big part of the SANA, uh, regional mission. Will be locally grown, the whole system of food delivery that happens.
Yeah, actually, speaking of that, we were fortunate enough to receive a $10,000 grant from Livwell Colorado to purchase CSA shares from Two Roots Farm in Basalt, um, that are now being, last week on Friday was our first day, we distributed 10, 10 shares out to actually 14 households. So, 21, um, households of older adults are getting fresh vegetables for free for, through October, so.
That's great.
Every week, yep. Um, so, taking money, investing it in our local agricultural economy and providing nutritious food to people in our community. It's a really great program.
Great, thank you for that.
Mm-hmm.
And veterans?
Yep, um, so, we, uh, are sad to say that our Veteran Services Officer, Janine Barth, um, resigned her position at the end of April, um, after almost three years here. And I'd like to thank her for her, uh, work here.
Remember when she first came here?
Mm-hmm. Um, and so, we're in the process of interviewing and hiring for a new Veteran Services Officer. Uh, we are gonna conduct another interview next week and then we should be close to having a decision at that point. So, we look forward to having someone onboard in the near future. Um, until then, uh, Eagle was gracious enough to let, uh, their Veteran Services Officer, Pat Hammond, uh, cover any needs that our, our veterans express to us. So, we've got coverage up and, up until we can get somebody in and trained up and ready to go.
What's the, what are the, are there any specific requirements as this announcement goes out for that job that you could articulate for us?
Well, the main requirement that we run into, um, with it being a part-time position, so that's a little difficult to hire, uh, but also that, that you, you have to have served in the military. Uh, that's a, a funding, uh, issue. But we've, we've had some very qualified applicants and, um, so, we're, we're, uh, hopeful that we'll have someone onboard soon.
Great.
Thank you. Steve?
I think a, a lot of veterans want to help other veterans in whatever capacity, and even if it's a part-time job. I can understand why there would be guys, well, men or women stepping up to, uh, take an interest in the position.
Absolutely, that's a commonality we've seen with everyone we've spoken to is, you know, they are interested in helping people. Um, you know, that, with it being a part-time position, obviously, the salary isn't the big draw. Um, so, we're lucky to have, uh, folks around here who wanna help their fellow veterans.
I think it is just important to note that it is, um, a job that requires a lot of organization and self-start, and there are a lot of regulations. So, much of what the Veterans Officer does is claims management. So, it's, I would say, highly technical. Uh, and those are the skills that Sam will be looking for in that position. Yeah. Okay, so that brings us to the payroll.
All right, you're almost done with me. So, as you can see, these are our, our program payrolls. So, these represent, um, direct expenditures on, on client services and benefits. Uh, this doesn't include any admin costs. Um, and I just wanted to call out a couple of areas where we see some change. Um, we've spoken recently about the change upcoming in the Child Care Assistance Program. Um, so, in here, we'll note that there's a fairly substantial decrease from 2018 to 2019 in the first quarter. Um, some of those are a result of the rule changes we implemented in July, um, requiring the application for child support as well as decreasing the income limit, uh, for the program down to the 185% of the federal poverty level. However, as we spoke about before, in July, that's going to increase to 285 or 265% of the federal poverty level. So, we expect that those expenditures will increase, um, going into the third quarter. Um, also, I wanted to call your attention to the Supplemental Nutrition Assistance Program, SNAP expenditures. Um, we've seen a interesting rebound from a low in, uh, 2017, back up to approximately 125,000 per quarter, um, which is great because we've been trying to increase those, if not enrollment, at least the benefits that are getting out into the community to improve food security. So, we're very happy to see that come back. We don't really have any explanation for it because our caseloads remain fairly steady. Um, generally speaking, that would represent a decrease in reported income, um, which is what would increase benefits. Or, for all we know, we've had households drop off that were of smaller size and then a larger household come onboard, which would represent a higher, uh, higher benefit going out to those folks. But those, other than that, our expenditures have remained pretty steady across the last three years, um, which is great. Um, you know, hopefully, we'd see some, uh, increase in the LEAP expenditures. Uh, we try to push that program. That's the Low Income Energy Assistance Program that helps people pay their heating costs. So, that's gonna be a big part of our outreach focusing when we're getting people enrolled for food assistance, but also is LEAP as well.
Would you mind talking a little bit about, there's a, an energy efficiency component to the LEAP, isn't there? Is there something tied to that with, does Core do it or is there?
Well.
Education or?
So, just to qualify for the program, it's income-based. And that's to qualify for just, uh, basically a credit against your heating costs that's paid to the provider. However, there is an efficiency part where they can do emergency furnace replacements. And I know that that's sometimes something that Core will come to us for because then they can focus on other appro- I know they do a lot of improvements to the home. So, if LEAP can cover that furnace cost, that allows them to make further improvements to the homes to increase the efficiency.
Right, it's good to see there's a synergy there.
Absolutely.
Great.
And a reminder that LEAP is available to people who own or rent.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, and the, the Core efficiencies are really for owners, right?
Right.
Right, you can't be messing with your rental unit. Okay, so we.
I will make a motion to approve the, um, 2009 first-quarter payrolls. 2019, not 2009. I was going way back.
I'll second that motion.
Second, all in the paper?
Aye.
Aye?
Great, thank you.
Great, great.
All right.
Senior Services.
Under Senior Services.
I can break Sam.
I will be quick compared to Sam. That's all right, though. So, every quarter, uh, I report on, uh, nutrition, the nutrition program, uh, which is mainly the Congregate Meals and Home Delivered Meals, uh, along with other things. And I report on these, these are things that we track, um, for the Area Agency on Aging and the State of Colorado per our grants of Title III funding and the older Coloradans Act. So, I'll. Need to report on, unnecessary, but I like to share as much as I can. So, I just have a couple, uh, graphs in here. Um, I don't have the home-delivered, uh, home-delivered meals chart on here, but the Congregate Meal, uh, chart, we see lots of fluctuation. Um, and we see similar parallels with home-delivered meals, meaning a decline particularly in the first quarter and comparisons to the last few years, which we, um, I started doing these comparisons sometime last year, I believe. And so, it was the first time we really got to see a multi-year comparison of different quarters of not only meals, but all of our programs. So, we, um, staff are still kind of contemplating why exactly we're seeing this downturn as far as participation almost unilaterally across all programs. Um, 'cause we don't necessarily experience that on a day-to-day basis. We, we feel, uh, from the staff perspective, that our services are, or we have more people participating. But when we look at the numbers, the number shows something, uh, something else. Uh, we just had a conversation this morning that this quarter, we feel those are, the, the, the tendency is going upward, but we won't know until we analyze that data. So, it's really interesting. Um, we're hoping to look at data some more and come back in the second quarter and hopefully have a little better grasp of why some, we're seeing some of these trends if this actually does continue as a kind of decline of, of a trend. We, we speculate on, on many things, but we don't have concrete answers unfortunately at this point.
So, it's a little, little hard, yeah, I was gonna say, it's a little hard to read. So, the, the teal-colored triangle is this current quarter. And if you look at Congregate Meals, it's just above the light blue line, the triangle. So, Congregate Meals is about where it was in 2017, but lower than 18. Transportation significantly lower, you see the triangle.
Yeah.
And these are transportation events, pickups or?
Uh, it's using, utilizing both volunteer drivers and the senior van. So, it's all combined. And with Congregate Meals, um, 18 was the first year that we started serving four days a week of Congregate Meals. So, um, this quarter is the first quarter we can compare four days and four days instead of four days and three days, which is why you see the big gap between 2017 and then 18.
Interesting.
We're not sure why yet.
So, staff is gonna investigate more for the second quarter and bring in, uh, some ideas to see if it changes or, um, really do an analysis.
That people didn't wanna leave their homes, so they all went to Florida or Arizona.
Snowy winter could be.
I mean, that was the first thing that came off the top of my head, maybe they.
Weren't going out.
Or they were.
We have many ideas of speculating.
They were on the beach somewhere and we were digging out the snow.
So, we're hoping to, uh, to investigate a little further and bring back some, some thoughts, not just on Congregate Meals, but a kind of across the board of, of why we are seeing, um, these decline when, when everything else is telling us the opposite.
Interesting.
Let alone the population of older adults in, in the county. Um, just a, a few other updates I wanted to point out. Um, some events that we've had in the last quarter. The bigger one, the biggest ones I wanted to point out is Redstone is still going strong and well. We're averaging, averaging, um, about 35 to 40 people every other week there for lunch. Uh, and the other programs that we have before and after lunch. So, we're really, um, proud of that and we're gonna continue and look at other creative ways to have, uh, funding, um, to stabilize that program, um, right now. But, uh, it's very well-received and if we do any, um, uh, we're always looking at how we can improve, uh, some of those programs and really, uh, hear the feedback that we're, we're hearing from the, the residents in Redstone, the Redstone area, I should say.
Are those figures rolled into the, the, these Congreg- like the Congregate Meals?
Sure, so, those figures are not. So, the Congregate Meals on this chart are only, um, those meals using AAA funds. So, currently, Red, the Redstone Services are completely sustained by county or department funds.
Okay.
Not using AAA funds because we would, we run into, uh, lots of red tape and other regulations that we would have to follow, which would be extremely difficult, though not impossible, by using an external kitchen, uh, and restaurant. And Eagle County is doing it in Basalt with, um, a caterer. Um, it's just a little extra lead work on our part if we chose to go that route.
But exercise and fitness does not include Redstone activities?
We're, we're kind of isolating all the Redstone numbers.
Okay.
At this point.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Wait, wait, it would be interesting in the future, though, it, 'cause I think we're gonna continue the Redstone service 'cause it's, not only has it been well-received, I mean, they really appreciate it there. Is to maybe do the same thing for their meals and their, uh, their participation just so we can see what the flow is there, too.
Sure.
That'd just be good information 'cause, you know, this is really informative and interesting.
Great.
I do like charts, so I can do that.
I know you do, that's why I threw it out there. That way, I give you another thing to talk about so you can start competing with Sam.
I can definitely do that, it's a great suggestion, thank you. Last update, and I'm not gonna go through everything that's on, in the memo, but the last thing I wanted to point out was that, um, uh, we concluded, I know this is written in the past tense, but we concluded our community input sessions around the update of the Aging Well Community Planning Initiative, which will probably have a different shorter name than that. Um, uh, we had two sessions up here in Aspen and we had two sessions, uh, in Basalt and some more informal sessions in Redstone since we've been down there gathering so much information as of late. They all went, uh, very well. Um, and we are starting this week slash perhaps next week of analyzing all the data. Um, in the meantime, Pickin County connects the online survey. Um, mechanism is still up, um, at least till the end of this month, uh, end of May, to collect, uh, further data for those who couldn't come to those sessions. And, um, and then go from there as far as, um, updating and adjusting the plan by feedback that we've heard from partners and community members and then coming back to, uh, Board of County Commissioners and present those and then hopefully go to the other municipalities within the county and do the same. So, that's kind of the overarching plan. But those are done and we're really glad and they went really well. So, we're looking forward to jumping into analyzing data. So, I think that's all I have unless there's any other questions.
How's your experience going with the Colorado Commission on Aging?
Uh, uh, it is going well, um, so far. Uh, we're working on right now how to better work and collaborate with the Strategic Action Planning Group on Aging, which Steve sits on, and also the new, um, Senior Advisor that we met at the last meeting. So, we're, we're excited to look at how can we better tighten up the relationship we have with the Action Planning Group and the Senior Advisor, so.
Yeah, and, uh, Steve, I don't recall his last name, who's the, the Council on Aging, member on SAPCA, has resigned from both. So, at some point, I guess he'll be, as, maybe as a group-picking, uh, replacement for him on the SAPCA committee.
I think in our next meeting in June is when we have kind of elections inside, internally as far as leadership within the commission.
And when Ben Multry was the representative, he was really a stalwart member of SAPCA for a couple of years until. And when Ben Moultrie was the representative, he was really a stalwart member of SAPCA for a couple of years until then he was termed out on the, the CASOA committee.
I sit on the Adult and Aging Sub-PAC for the Colorado Department of Human Services and CHSDA. And last month, we had a presentation on the Strategic Action Planning Group and the Commission on Aging Plan and the HICPUF Aging Plan. And we talked about the need to align these plans, especially because local communities like ours now have local aging plans. So as you're going out there in the universe, if you could continue this message of, right now, for us, we will have four aging plans that will impact us. HICPUF, our own aging plan, and then the two larger state plans. So I do think that while there wasn't any attention for a long time, we're a little bit, now we just need to consolidate some of these plans so that, so that we have the best practice plans. And not, what happens is money follows one or the other and then we're chasing it and then sometimes it's in conflict and so I hope that we don't end up there.
Who would be at the top of the list of persons or organizations that would be instrumental in doing that combination of plans? I mean, is there a number one person we could be talking to to say-
The governor.
The governor or, that would probably be the new senior advisor to the governor. That would be probably my, my bet, she's been there for-
She's the senior advising on how, on aging issues?
Yes.
Could you send me her contact information?
Sure.
Just so if I run into her in one of my travels, I'll have a better connection.
Great, and I don't know, I don't see anything on the agenda for CCI, but it's an opportunity to mix always with CDHS and, because I think the director will be there.
Sometimes at cog meetings, people show up from the state level, almost always recently with new people involved, and so you never know who's gonna be at the next meeting and it's always nice to know who that person is.
Right.
I do know that at the State Unit of Aging level and the HICPUF level and some of the state levels, that some of those conversations within SAPCA and the commission about breaking down the barriers of, of different departments, all having a plan around aging or different things, those conversations are happening. But I, I completely agree and I think more and really pointing out that we have so many plans and, and are you, are we all talking to each other?
Right.
We're getting there, I think, yeah.
Okay, thanks.
I just want to check how, how are we doing on time?
We think we have two hours, what do you think we have?
You've got an hour.
One hour left. We have five more hours.
Talk slower.
We expect to be out earlier because Sam and I have to drive to Denver, so there you go.
To present tomorrow.
Matt McGon, I manage our adult and family services. I just have a few updates today, I don't believe I have any charts for you to look at.
Pictures.
I did wanna celebrate that we do have a new caseworker with us. We had an opening way back in September and when Leo resigned. And it's, it's kind of a process for us to get someone trained, so Chelsea was hired in January, so she's been with us for a little while and has been eagerly waiting to get herself out there and start working with families. So she did complete her training in April and we're super excited to have her onboard. We've had quite an influx of reports this year, I think we're averaging about twenty-five to thirty a month right now, which is higher than our average. Majority of those are in child welfare and that's specifically where Chelsea will begin her work, although she's also gonna be doing some prevention work with our adults through our Care Navigation Grant. And so Chelsea, I didn't know if you had anything else you wanted to say?
No, I'm happy to be here.
We're happy to have you.
Pronounce your last name to make sure we get it right.
It's Carnoli.
It's Carnoli, okay, great, thank you.
Carnoli.
Welcome, again.
When I started, I didn't even come up here and introduce myself, so. Thought that we should have Chelsea do that, so thank you. Another update is, this was just outside of our first quarter, but we, I wanted to mention it since it was last month, we, we did celebrate our Child Abuse Prevention Awareness Month. And typically every year, we put up our, our pinwheels and our signs. We put up pinwheels that represent the number of reports that we receive each year for child abuse and neglect. And this year was a bit of a challenge, we had a lot of snow at the office, but towards the end of the month, was able to get those in there. We had a hundred and forty-two of our pinwheels planted this year. Again, that was based on the number of reports we received for the calendar year twenty eighteen.
George?
So is that up or down or even from last year or the previous couple of years?
That's a good question, it's fluctuated in Picken County quite a bit. So the year before in twenty seventeen, we only had ninety-eight. In twenty sixteen, I believe there was a hundred and sixty or more. So it's, we've seen it kind of fluctuate. We may have had a down year in twenty seventeen due to the change in our, our referral number. We used to take the, each report locally, we had someone that would do that locally and then our on-call staff would take it, take the phone calls after hours. And now we contract with the state, with the state to provide the hotline service. And so I think we're seeing the numbers creep back up to, to what Picken County is used to seeing, based on people just being more familiar with that, with that number.
But if we were to sustain thirty referrals a month, which is what you're saying, we're, we're talking upwards of three hundred and sixty a year and we just had a hundred and forty-eight last year. So it does, it will fluctuate and it will get quiet during the summer, quieter, but that's a pretty significant increase for the team to be managing this spring.
Are referrals possibly overlapping by person, I guess?
Same person.
Yeah, there's, there are a lot of duplicate referrals that we, we see. And so I didn't factor that into our pinwheel count, we just did the referral number. But if I had to guess, I would say, you know, somewhere between twenty and thirty percent are recidivism, where we see another referral that's come by. We've, some we, you know, when we get these referrals, we only screen in about forty to fifty percent of them. And that number kind of fluctuates, too. But we are offering services to a hundred percent of the families that are referred to us. We have a, a method for prevention services at this point where we can reach out to families. If it doesn't reach that level, we're, we're needing to assess for child abuse or neglect.
Is there, is there a correlation with some of the earlier information you presented in terms of the self-sufficiency numbers?
It's really hard to determine, we, we don't see a lot of referrals that include neglect where necessities aren't being met. We're seeing a lot more referrals on what I'll talk about here in just a second around family conflict and the impact that that will have on children and families. We're seeing that a lot from law enforcement and within schools. And so it's not necessarily, at least as far as I can tell, I haven't seen a correlation of that with-
Yeah, I was just wondering if, because when you talk about stress, if you're, if you're sort of under that, within that gap that you're having a hard time making ends meet, I mean, that creates a lot of stress in, in a family, in a, in that type of environment.
I do recall that being the case in Garfield County when we went through the recession, we saw much more, I guess, I guess higher levels of those types of referrals with the, the family stress being, being high, which impacts families in a lot of different ways. So with the Child Abuse Prevention Month, we did host an event this year, which is something we may continue to try to do, we felt it was valuable for our community. We invited Dr. Jennifer Harmon from Colorado State University to provide a family, what we call the Family Conflict Workshop. And this allowed us to have two workshops, one was for professionals, a lot of the partners in our communities that we work with, were able to attend the morning session. We had a decent turnout for both workshops, we had about fifteen people. In retrospect, I think we would have maybe done some more on our, our marketing there to try to increase that, but we were happy to get at least that many people there. And we felt that, at least at, after the evening event, that some of the, the families that attended really walked away with some important information. It's, it can be a very sensitive topic when, when families come to these types of events, because it's personally impacting their lives. And I know in this case that we had some people that walked away that had some realizations on their own behaviors and how that could impact, be impacting their children and their children's relationship with their, with the other parent. What we learned about in this workshop, I think, was important. Dr. Harmon was able to really give us a good definition of what parental alienation is versus, you know, regular parental conflict or, on the other end, domestic violence. And so that's important for our caseworkers to have a good understanding of when they go and assess families, to try to help them, try to help them with supportive services or seeing areas about behavior within the family that might be impacting the children's development. And so it was really good information to help us with those types of assessments. And then also in, with parental alienation, what we learned about is how there is power differentials at times between parents. And at times, one parent can try to gain favor with the child over another parent and begin alienating the child. Which, based on Dr. Harmon's research, the impact of that can be more traumatic than a, a parent dying. Because that, the confusion and the lack of understanding or thinking that parent isn't good enough or wanting to support the child. So again, I think just having this person there for this event was really impactful for the professionals on how to assess and work with families, but then also directly with the families later in the evening. So we, we hope to have something similar in the future.
Great, thanks for that.
Can I, on the, on the page following this, on page nine, it says revise the definition of the program, add definitions for youth and conflict. My question when I first read this is, how do you just define conflict? I mean, that's, that use, word can be used in so many different directions, so in this case, what's the overall definition, family conflict, youth conflict?
Sure, that's a good question, I was gonna move into the youth and conflict definition.
So I, yeah, because I said I turned over and went, oh, see, right there, so that, I think that's a key for me in both of these.
Yeah, that means something very specific to us. Obviously, this family conflict workshop was more focused on child abuse, neglect, prevention and protection. And so in, in our world of child welfare, we have two program areas, two main program areas that we work with. And one of them is child protection and that's program area five. And then we have what's called youth and conflict and that's program area four. And so youth and conflict is a hot topic here in Picken County and, for a variety of reasons. You may have seen some of the different workshops recently around parental and teen-
Supporting teens.
Supporting teens through some of the issues that we've seen locally here. And so with the youth and conflict, the state has actually done us a big favor, because youth and conflict in this program area was very unclear for our department on how we were to respond and assess these youth. The, the definition used to be beyond the control of parent would be a youth in conflict. And so when we're primarily focused on addressing concerns of abuse and neglect, we also have children that can be unsafe at times, because their behaviors are out of control of their, of their parents and they're outside in the community behaving in ways that could be unsafe for them or somebody else. And so the state basically has allowed, well, has, has finally given us a definition on what this means that's more clear and given us a way to screen these in and out based on this definition. Which will help us work with our community partners, with this population in a different way. I think there's trying, the state is trying to provide some equity between the Department of Youth Services and the Department of Human Services. So the Department of Youth Services is more geared towards those youth in conflict, juvenile delinquent cases. And in our county, we've seen a lot of pressure put on our department to institutionalize and place youth out of their community into residential facilities. And we're finding that in direct conflict with our work when we're, we feel like we can provide services here and do not find safety concerns that would justify an out-of-home placement. And so we're working with our local community partners and we've recently developed a crossover youth plan with, primarily with our probation department and, and youth zone. So that we have a clear definition on how each system can work with these cases and families in a more effective way. So that's, I wanted to bring that up because we feel that that's a, that's a big change for us and how we're gonna do that work. Is there any questions about that?
Oh, it sounds good.
Okay. Where our hopes is to reduce that congregant care number with these kids, you'll see in our, our CSTAT numbers that we've, we've had high placement numbers in that area and we're hopeful that this collaboration will help out. And I think that's all I have right now for my updates.
Great. Okay, so quickly, Human Services Admin, Lindsay's not here, but just wanted to let you all know that we have created two workshops for the agencies that receive funding from the Healthy Community Fund to really try to tighten up how they report on the impact of their work. We call it outcomes, measures. And so that work is, it's been really helpful, we pulled all of their proposed outcomes together and found that half were, were providing what we call outputs, which is numbers, right? We saw this many people and therefore we are doing the right thing. The Healthy Community Fund is requiring them to go a step further. They saw that many people and how many people said their lives got better. So Lindsay's working with Lisa on these trainings and then agencies are invited to resubmit their outcomes to us. Because half of the agencies are partners, right? So for the next three years, those will be the outcome measures that they'll be measuring against. So we're excited about that work. We've been working with the City of Aspen on the joint application, which I believe goes out in a week or two, for human services only. We collect the applications for city funding and, and get that information over to the city, so those have been successful meetings. And the last is just to let you all know, when we presented in November, you, there were some questions about our environmental funding. And we told you that we were gonna pull together meetings with other groups in the county that are providing funding to environmental agencies. We've had two meetings so far and, and we're gonna just come back, probably in a work session in July. But what we found is that throughout the county, Open Space and Trails, Healthy Rivers and Streams, Healthy Community Fund, Open Space and Trails and Environmental Health all have an array of ways that we give money to environmental groups, whether it's a contribution to general operating, like the Healthy Community Fund, a fee for service like Open Space or for special projects like Healthy Rivers and Streams. It's been really helpful for us to map out where the money is going and, and the amount of it is so much bigger than just a Healthy Community Fund. So we're gonna bring that back to you. And we're, we're thinking that ultimately, you might want to think about how you want all of it to link to climate change. And whether or not, since that's a big rock of yours, of ours, we'll have that opportunity once you can see where all the money is coming from and where it's going. So, so we're doing that and we've been, we held, thanks to Chad, we created a manual for people with access and functional needs. And we had two or three trainings for people who need to plan for emergencies. And Chad did a lot of backup work, now Lindsay is getting trained as our ESF six coordinator, mass care and housing. And I think it's important to identify who we are talking about when we're talking about access and functional needs. And Lindsay came back with a good description. It is children and adults with physical, mobility, sensory, intellectual, developmental or cognitive and mental health disabilities. Older adults, people with chronic or, chronic or temporary health conditions, women in the late stages of pregnancy and people needing bariatric equipment. People with limited English proficiency, low literacy, communication needs, people with low incomes, people without access to transportation, people experiencing homelessness.
That's a big group.
That's a big group, yeah, and it's an important group and, and when Lindsay sent this to- And, and when Lindsay sent this to us, she put in parentheses, nan qualifies because of my broken arm, right? People with injuries who suddenly if. Right. I could not have moved quickly the last two months. So, so we're taking this definition and we're, we're going to be continuing to work on trying to help people prepare for emergencies, prepare for fires, prepare for floods, avalanches, make sure they have go kits, they have their medication and that they know where to go if they need electricity or anything like that. So that work continues. And the, I think I have, let's see. I just wanted to show you this. This is the Colorado C stat dashboard. This is where the Colorado Department of Human Services has set measurements and standards for all counties and other partners. These are the county standards. There are standards for behavioral health and independent living and, and D Y C as well. We, you all get this in email, so I just wanted to go over it a little bit with you. We, this is the 44 small counties you'll see at the very top. We are one of the small counties. So you can see here in these next two slides and you have copies of them, the areas in red are where small counties are not meeting the mark. And in particular, it's around child support and timeliness with adult protection and timeliness with child protection. And you, you get this report and then you get the next report, which is Picken specific. And one of the, I just recently got a letter from CDHS that said in 2018, Picken County exceeded the goal in 15 areas where the 44 small counties were generally at 11 areas. We didn't meet the goal in eight areas, but the small counties, 14 areas. So we're doing much better than other small counties, which is the point of showing you this. The other thing, when you look at the Picken numbers here, I wish I had a laser, but at the bottom where we show red around adult protection, you'll see that in the last month or two, we've had a significant turnaround from staff in terms of meeting 100% of the expectations. So we're happy about that. And this number, children in congregate care is the number that Matt was referring to, that the, we've been, we've been given children to place in institutions psychiatric primarily by the judge, even against department recommendations. The judge is, is trying to do this for the child's safety and also community safety. But what Matt was saying is that we, we are really going to, we are really trying to work on turning this around. We have supports in the community. Children are not better off in institutions for the most part. And if they need to go to an institution, it needs to be short term. And we, we have children in care for six months, eight months. It's, it's really not what's, what we know to be best for development for children. So I wanted, but you can see it right there. We're like really significantly out of whack with our children in out of home. Even though it's a small number, nine, it's still important.
So the judge referred nine children to institutional.
These are the, all the cases. What's the 9.7? Do you know what the denominator is there?
Some kind of, I'm not sure what the, what that calculation is. But yeah, if I, we've had a significant increase of this over the past two years. And but prior to that, it was rare that we would see a child need that level of care. And so to have, I think we've had around seven or nine ordered over the past year and a half or two. So we, we're just, and, and that puts quite a strain on our, our team. There's needs to leave the county to go visit children in out of home care at least once every two weeks. That's our, that's our process there. And so there's just a lot that goes with that. And also we're worried about the impact that for children at this level of adolescence are really needing positive connections with adults in their communities transition into adulthood and knowing those positive experiences. When they're in institutions, they're not getting that. And so research would tell us that it's having a long-term negative impact. So we're worried about that and trying to work with that.
I think I, I misstated that. Sorry. I think that nine, that's a denominator is a rate. So we in the month had one, but you see one each month. And that's why I was thinking nine.
If you're comparing this to the 44 small counties, it seems like that's a metric which is always in the red. It's a difficult, it's probably one of the more difficult things is my guess. Glancing at this, that could be one of the more difficult goals to meet. And so it'd be interesting just to keep that in mind.
It's not uncommon for other counties to experience that and the state has taken those initiatives to clarify rules. So that's been helpful.
I had it. I thought I had it in here. The second page of the 44 small counties. Let me see. Here. They're children in congregate care. So our, our rate was over nine, I think in the forty.
The goal's 6.1 for both, but so ours is higher than.
Ours is higher.
9.3 children per 1,000 in the county is how they come up with that rate. And so if you look at the, the smaller counties, I think it was a 7.2. So yeah, you're, we're seeing a higher rate there.
Still in the red.
Still in the red.
Are those, so those numbers are set for, you know, we're, we're lumped in with 44 other counties for those goals. Are those.
The big ones, yeah.
Their goals that are given to you?
Those, these are the goals for the entire state. So it's all 64 counties. They're, they just lump us in with the 44 small because the, the large and the, the larger medium, their numbers are so big that, that they can't, we can't be compared to them. Now, what's happening is that the new director is having meetings and they're looking at changing these goals or changing some of the format. I don't know how much it will change. It really is always hard for us as a super small county when one case can put us 100% out of compliance, right? But, but it gives us information and in, in this case, you know, this information about children in congregate care is red and it should be red. So it gives us the ability to manage a bit with data.
If you were to write these goals, would they look similar? Would the percentages look similar, do you think? If you set them individually for Picken County?
If we were to write these measures, we would probably choose other measures. Do you think? Well, I mean, this is where counties, counties frequently go to the state and are like, this is not telling us that children are safe. Let's look at some other measures.
Doesn't fit our county.
But these are the measures that they came up with. So do you want to?
Yeah, I think the measures are fair. We'll take a big hit if we miss one. And for example, right now, we're, our database is being upgraded and we're using two databases. So there's been some data entry errors. And on that last one, there's another red mark that should be green for us because we met the, we met the response time, but the caseworker entered it in wrong. And so sometimes things like that are happening also with these. But so if we miss one thing, the impact can, can turn it right to red and change our whole year goal.
Numbers are so low.
So I guess that would be the difference.
So we don't, these are, this is public information. It's posted on the CDHS website. You all get it. We get it. I get it every month. I talk to the team when we're in the red. But we don't get too wigged out about it because we're audited in all of our programs. And, and for example, Child Welfare came in and audited our out of home placement and said we did everything right. That to me tells me that children are safe more than some of these numbers. So, but it's still information.
Right.
Right? All right. So the last slide is just to, if I can get it there. Anybody? Anybody? How does it go next? Okay. Just wanted to celebrate Garfield County. They, I recently got a letter that we, Picken County, were getting an award for our child support services. And we all know that Garfield County does it for us. So they.
Read that, gone.
So good for us to know, but also good. I think we'll just go, we'll just go pick us the award. No, but you know, these are, this is really, really an important program that, that helps children and, and parents participate together in the financial obligation of children. And it helps our children not necessarily grow up in poverty. So they, you can see that they, they met or they exceeded these four goals. Areas, paternity establishment and having an order for child support cases, current child support paid, and then the arrears cases with a payment toward arrears. They are really diligent. They, as soon as a case is filed for child support services, they do everything they can to find the parent who is, who needs to participate more financially. And they do everything they can to engage that parent and they're really successful. And we're so lucky that they're partners of ours. So congratulations to Garfield County.
Would you like us to, would you like to draft for us a letter to sign as the board of commissioners, thanking them and congratulating them?
Sure.
Be nice.
And I just note during future agendas, I was going to be suggesting a joint meeting coming up with Garfield County and it might be nice for you guys to do a thank you there.
Yeah, whatever. Just I thought that would be nice for us to do to thank them for making us look really good.
And we'll, we'll split the cash prize.
Do you have that scheduled or you're going to schedule it? All right. So I'll draft a letter to the county commissioners and to Mary Baydarian, thanking them for making us look good.
Thanks.
All right. Is there any other questions? Anything you all have heard or any, anything you're concerned about? We're about to go to CCI.
You're doing a great job.
I was just going to say when you were, you were, I wanted to go back quickly to the Community Fund conversations regarding the.
Environmental?
Environmental thing. And I was just wondering if we might ask applicants if they have a climate action plan, you know, just to get them thinking about that. And I'm not sure where it would go and if it makes sense in every case, but it'd be an interesting conversation while you're, while you're talking. But as we're focusing on that, it might just help them focus. Just a thought.
I don't know how many nonprofits have a climate action plan.
Well, how many should?
Right. Get them, get them thinking.
We could add it. I think that my recommendation would be that we wait this year and that we come back with our partners internally and really look at, because our first recommendation was, was really about our own climate action plan and what we're doing. And then I think we could really look at 2021, asking a question of significance to the right agencies.
Right. Great. Thank you.
Yeah. How, how did their efforts help us fulfill issues or points in our climate action plan?
Yeah, I think the context might be important for our citizen grant review committee because the, you know, if it's a yes or no question, I'm not sure.
Going to get us.
I, I just don't know what direction we're giving yet until we've got the, that broader context to, to put around it. But so it might, it might be confusing for both our citizen grant review committee and the nonprofits right now.
Yeah. I think we need to, we need to educate ourselves more about the linkage, but I believe that's where we're going, towards a climate action change plan.
That sounds good. Thank you.
Okay. Thanks. Good job, guys.
Thanks for listening. Thank you, Sam. Did such a good job.
Boy, you spit it out.
We will not be bothering you again until August for the second.
No, I bet we see you before then.
And next time Chelsea will run the presentation.
Yeah, Chelsea. Thank you, Chelsea, for coming.
There you go. Do we need to adjourn? Move to adjourn the Board of Social Services.
A second.
For a second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye. Thank you. All for coming. Great. It's great to get the update.
So do we have a break?
Well, we're 20 minutes early.
Yeah, we're running quite a bit ahead. So if you guys are ready for a break, it may be a good time and I'll try and find David.
Go for a walk around.
The grassroots?
Do you want to come back at three? Do you want to take a 20 minute break? If we're waiting, expecting. Well, let's see.
We can always do future agenda, open discussion in 15 minutes and get out of here.
So 15 minute break.
Yeah, 15.
Okay.
Yeah, perfect.
Or do you want to do that now? Would you prefer to do?
How about a 10 minute break?
Let's take a 10 minute break now. We'll be back.
Okay, we'll take a 10 minute break and keep moving. Get, get you up in the air.
7 for 7, maybe 8. You don't want to go outside.
I want to go outside and take several deep breaths.
Thursday night. Thursday night.
I believe that we have settlement on the, on an eighteen-foot sign. The City of Aspen had some concerns with the location that staff was presenting. So, looking to have Chris Burudi there and some more fleshed out information in terms of of the location that staff is recommending. And a possible alternative, if you do decide to go down that road. So, just so you know, City of Aspen's primary concern is visual impact with the Cozy Point, open space being right there.
Can I just ask a real quick question?
Yeah.
Wasn't their, their alternate choice, which was further down Valley, also on their open space?
The next possible alternative to have appropriate site distance is right at the, right as you're coming up to it. So, it's technically, both of, both locations are on C dot right of way, so neither of them are directly on the open space.
Both of them have some kind of impact on a Cozy Point, open space. Because it runs that whole, like, almost to the out for the Wildcat Turnoff.
Yeah, visually, it physically sits just before it, but visually, it could have that impact, yeah.
Okay, alright, just want to clarify that.
So, that's, that's the direction that we're looking for there. And then, in terms of other updates, David Peckler would like to provide an update on the Transit Center in Snowmass, and the work that they're doing there. And a, a request from Town of Snowmass is to do an update on the Raptor Retreat and the Ballot Measure 7A, and the progress that's being made on that end. So, I'm looking at having David Johnson there to provide that update. So, that, that retreat would take place just prior to, a couple of weeks before, I believe, before the June twentieth meeting. And then, there has been some discussion, and this isn't on your, on your agenda, about doing a, an update on the Maroon Bells and the Shuttle Service Study that's been happening up there. I know George attended the last meeting. If there is some sort of update, we can provide that if you're, if you'd be interested in knowing where we're at, at this point. But, that is another item that has come up that we could add on.
What did we need an, George help, what did we need an update on that?
We'd just be looking, so the Forest Service has been working with the, the city and the county, looking at the congestion issues around Highlands with the Maroon Bells and the bus service, and the expanded bus service out to Buttermilk. So, Volpe has put together a study, and we had a meeting last week to try to figure out what the next steps were. So, this would just be an update on, not diving deep into that study, but providing, answering questions on that study and letting you know where we're at in that process.
I wasn't aware that, I knew there were issues, I just wasn't sure how far it.
And that's a topic that will likely come up at a future joint meeting with the city, so we'll get coordinated on that.
Yeah, this will continue to move forward.
Okay. So, we don't need to add it to the OTC agenda then, this time, or are you suggesting that we do?
I don't think that you necessarily need to. I just wanted to throw it out there that there is some, there is some movement there, and there has been some interest expressed possibly adding it as an update to the fully OTC. So, I wanted to, to bring that up since it is on the radar.
Seems like we're pretty full already. I'm thinking, unless somebody thinks we ought to put it on, I'd say let's let it mature, let it develop and then bring it back later.
I have another question, though, is that okay?
Sure.
We also have prep time for the EOTC meeting on the eighteenth. So, this is, we're setting the agenda and then we're going to prep for it on the eighteenth, because we'll have more.
If, if you guys feel like there's an item that we need further discussion on, if after looking at the agenda today, you guys are comfortable going into it, we can take that time back. It's up to you.
George?
So, Dave, on the, on the flap, the Brush Creek improvements. You know, I mentioned this to John a while ago, and I'll, I'll mention again as we have a work session with the airport regarding parking. I, I think that we need to look immediately at utilizing some of the Brush Creek parking lot for overflow for the airport, to allow overnight parking and come up with a system that, that, that ensures that people who are parking there overnight are actually flying in or flying out of the Aspen Airport. But I think there's an immediate need, seeing that almost every other day, we were getting, picking alerts that the parking spots at the airport are full, and find an alternative method. Well, it's hard to find an alternative method if you can't park your night, park your car for an extended stay. So, I think as you're planning, we need to look at where we might put some overnight parking for the airport, and I think we need to do that like yesterday.
I agree, because we're not giving people any options.
Remember, you also, George also just mentioned that, you know, how do we, how can we actually track people who are at the airport for the, for flying rather than, say, going on a four-pass loop hike, and that's the cheapest place to park, huh?
Put a copy of your boarding pass on your dashboard.
Maybe your boarding pass becomes part of the, your ticket or something, just, just so you have evidence that they actually were flying in and out, and that's where they need to be.
Yeah, and this is something that, that's on my radar for sure. And what I would say is that, in the design process, these are physical designs that we're looking at now, not necessarily operations. We're trying, we're taking that into account and looking at how, how we could potentially expand that out if we needed to. I think that there's a lot of details that need to be worked through, and on the staff side, we have been discussing establishing a more formalized operations plan out at the Brush Creek Lot. That would be coming to you eventually. We're not quite there yet. So, as, as the, the flap improvements come online, there's a number of things that we need to look at in terms of operations. And the issue of long-term parking keeps coming up, and it'll need to be addressed on that somehow.
But is there anything we can do on the immediate term to help address this problem at least, until we have something concrete, physically added?
How often does the problem occur?
A lot, I get, I get Picking County alerts.
I mean, you know, a year ago, I never, it never happened.
Right.
And, and now it's, it's, it's a norm.
Seeing the parking prices and such go up here, in, in the Aspen core, we're seeing more of those impacts get pushed out where parking is cheaper. We do have overnight parking in Buttermilk, so it's not completely clear to me why the, the airport is, is filling up. But, we, we do have at least anecdotal evidence that, you know, folks are using particularly the long-term parking at the airport, and then maybe going on hiking trips or, you know, other types of, of activities. And so, we can talk to the city's parking department, who has the IGA with C dot, to see if there's something we can do in the more immediate.
And what about the use of the airport parking lots for non-related airport issues? We've got to figure out a way to do that, for people who are parking there and then coming into town to go to work, because it's cheaper to park there and...
It is a really challenging enforcement issue, because you almost have to have somebody out there all the time.
Well, it could be the same idea, if you're able to use technology so that when you go through the gate to get your ticket, maybe you have to scan your boarding pass or something.
That may be more complicated than it sounds, yeah.
Right, and Steve?
I'll put a copy of them on your dashboard.
It's kind of ironic that people are parking at the airport instead of parking in town because it's less expensive. Well, the Brush Creek parking, parking ride is really less expensive because it doesn't cost anything to park there for the day. So, if we could convince people to make up their mind earlier, maybe using our new sign, really emphasize the free parking at the Brush Creek, so they don't then end up trying to go to the airport and get the less expensive parking there.
But we don't allow overnight parking right now at Brush Creek.
So, that's the issue to at least bring up, I just mentioned this as an issue, just to bring up at the, the OTC meeting. I'm going to bring this issue up when the airport comes before us for parking fees. And, John, if you could follow up with the city and see if there's a way to implement something now.
I know, we've had, I've had feedback just about, you know, raising the fees out there for parity with Aspen is a solution. It's one of the first solutions that came up, but it's not a very appetizing one to a lot of people that are using the airport. All of a sudden, they're raising the fees there to keep out, keep everyone else out. Anyway, I've had some feedback about that, like, maybe there's a better way, so it's worth looking at. Okay.
Who asked to lower fees at Buttermilk? Because city parking is just more expensive.
At Buttermilk is already, is Buttermilk more? Okay, so, something to look at. Yeah, it was funny, because I was, I was at the airport bus stop one day, and some guys got on with big backpacks and a dog, and I said, "Where did you just fly in from?" And they said, "Oh, we just parked here because we're doing the four-pass loop." That was my first, that was my first answer. "Oh, really? This is interesting." Last summer, so, alright. Anything else? What else we got?
I think that's it on my end. So, from what I'm hearing, you're okay with the, the agenda as it's laid out here?
Yeah, I'm not sure we need to have another time. Let's leave it on the, let's leave the time slot till closer to, maybe, John, in case something comes up.
I mean, I just think we probably, I don't know if we've fully vetted the design, our inputs on the design, that they've now...
For the sign?
No, not, not for the sign, for the actual layout, different layouts of the Brush Creek Park and Ride, which we may want to discuss before going to EOTC discuss, to discuss, as well as any alternate location.
Okay, so we might need more than fifteen minutes if we're going to kind of hold our own EOTC meeting.
And that would be, that would be conducted as part of preparation meeting, the, the Tuesday before, that's, that's what that's intended for. Yeah, so then, at that point, you would have the full EOTC packet, and I can run through a lot of those things with you beforehand.
Might be helpful, as, as it's such a large cumbersome group.
I think, I think, I agree with Kelly. I think it's always more productive and beneficial if we can go in with a consensus in terms of what we'd like, so we're not arguing amongst ourselves once we get there. It's, it's hard enough to watch the city council argue amongst themselves. Hopefully, hopefully the new council, hopefully the new council won't be doing that.
So, I'll plant on keeping that preparation meeting then.
Great.
That'd be great.
Okay.
Great, thanks, Dave.
Thank you.
Okay, and we are moving right along. We are at Future Agenda Review here. Brian, you're early. I thought we were faster than we are. Future agendas?
Yeah, thanks, Greg. So, probably the most significant thing, as I had mentioned earlier during Nan's presentation, is we have been working with Garfield County at the staff level to establish kind of the structure and form of a broadband authority, which would be created between Garfield County and Picking County. We have some more of those conversations that need to be concluded at the staff level, but I think both staffs are feeling that we're close enough now that we need to start scheduling conversations between both bodies to make sure that you are in agreement about the structure and form of broadband authority. We think we would be ready for a joint meeting, probably towards, unfortunately, Kelly, mid or late July, which would also have us doing a prep meeting with you guys late June. So, if you are okay with us setting up a joint meeting with Garfield County, I think the whole time would probably need to be dedicated to this broadband authority conversation.
I mean, I understand that. It would be great to allow little time, since we're meeting with Garfield County, to discuss the Core Act, since they were losing some of, some of their support, and for them to understand how it actually would benefit them as well.
May need two meetings.
We may, but, I mean, it's...
They set up a meeting and block the time, and we can, as we get closer, we can figure out how much we want to take on at one bite.
Yeah, so we, we may schedule just a little bit larger block of time. I believe they were here last time, so we'll probably be traveling there.
Yeah, they scratched my table with the plaque we gave them.
Oh, that's right. They did hang that in their meeting.
Oh, we're not...
They did?
Yeah. So, we will target, we'll work with Garfield County to target a meeting in probably mid to late July, I think is the timeframe that that's going to come in. And then, late June, we'll schedule a work session so that you can review the work that, that staff has done and the model to date and, and prior to going into that joint meeting.
Great, great.
That's all I've got.
George's comment about the Core Act and Garfield County, I think their biggest reservation that they expressed was that there was no carb, methane capture aspect in coal base, and I don't have a sense of whether that's even practical. So, it'd be nice if we had that beforehand.
I think that's already been discussed and looked at.
Well, that's not their biggest reservation, I bet that's...
That's the one they articulated most recently.
Well, it changes, you know, but anyway, we should have...
You could have a response to that. I'm sure everybody'd love to capture the methane and coal base, if it was, if it's possible.
Like we did over in Somerset.
Like we did in Somerset. They did in Somerset.
And just on that, on that topic, is Eagle County not a player in our broad regional broadband authority?
So, none of the infrastructure resides in Eagle County, but we will be able to provide service in Eagle County. And I think as both of our attorney staffs looked at it, it was the infrastructure location and support. So, right now, Eagle County, I don't think is participating in any of the broadband infrastructure.
Maybe changing.
Maybe, maybe changing, so...
Very minimal.
It may be, it may be that we need to invite Eagle County to the authority in the future. You can always add in, but you need to get a, a base structure put in place. And right now, Garfield and Picking County has, have made all the investments to, to develop the network.
Thank you.
And we'd exempt out Glenwood, because they have their own.
Glenwood is actually looking to be part of our authority, and they are also one of our major linkages for redundancy. We're actually looking at buying broadband through...
Even though they have their own, like, utility, their broadband is a utility like City Electric.
We're partnering with them, yeah. So, that'll be all, Kara's got all kinds of cool drawings, of course.
I heard all kinds of cool presentations at the COG meeting. They had a whole thing on broadband, it was great.
We've got Yeti Snowman Designs now, it's really fun.
Not Thor?
Okay.
I do have one future agenda, just one. On June twelfth, I'm going to bring this back again, John. We still have on here, and I don't know what the board did, because I was on a drive when you were still discussing the ski company land use applications. Do we still think we have time that day to do our Basalt meeting? Are we still planning that?
We are, but I think we may need to move it, because it wasn't clear how all of that was...
Okay, just want to make sure that we give everybody a heads up, because that ski company thing could, there's a timeframe, we have to end our meeting and get to Basalt, and I'm not sure we have time to do that.
Well, Patty, the, that, that ski coal land use has been continued to June twenty-sixth.
They took it off the twelfth, so that's...
Oh, it is off the...
You and I didn't know, that's because you won't be here.
Well, you weren't here either.
Right, yeah.
Okay, well, that solves that, then we can still go to Basalt.
That's what you got for future agendas? Anything else?
Thank you for that clarification.
Steve, I see you're looking for something, Kelly?
Well, I was just, no, I was just looking at the June twenty-sixth to see if the ski company stuff was double booked, but it wasn't put on there yet.
Kelly, did you have?
I do, so, this is sort of bridging us into open discussion, but I did want to, you know, bring up a topic and a proposal that I have, and, you know, open a conversation with you guys about maybe directing some staff support. And, you know, this, this has to do with, you know, the underlying currents of topics that we have been discussing over the last five months. And my feeling now, a lot of the individual issues that we've been dealing with have this undercurrent of a conversation of growth, and where our community is going in terms of addressing growth and managing growth. And, you know, George, I think, framed this conversation really nicely at our last meeting, looking, when we were talking about kind of house size and energy use and stuff, that I kind of wanted to follow up on, because, you know, we've, we've really benefited from, I think, some past vision and fortitude from prior commissioners who've sat at this table over the generations and decades. And, you know, we looked at and survived and have benefited from the downzoning that we saw in the seventies, in anticipation of kind of the eighties booms, and then mitigated growth through the nineties. I think we got a little bit of a pass from this conversation when we hit the Great Recession due to just some of the natural slowing down of growth pressures, but I think we're back in a place where we're feeling those pressures very consistently. And, you know, I've been a little bit out of, at a loss to look towards what is kind of our overarching vision for addressing growth and how this question comes up in the individual policy silos that we've been talking about. You know, there's some kind of contradictions. I mean, we, we are a year-round resort economy, but we have neighborhoods that are dark most of the year. You know, we have a low actual count of people who are moving and increase in population here year-round, yet we're feeling all this pressure on our services. You know, our, our calendars feel more crunched than ever, and I think intensities of use are increasing. And, you know, I've just sort of been asking myself, like, you know, our off-seasons are getting shorter, are, is it a perception of growth that, that we're feeling? Is it real measured growth that we're feeling? You know, what is, what is the benefit to our community as we're kind of feeling increases in intensity on the uses of our spaces and of our time? And so, I've just sort of struggled that, with that a little bit, and knowing, for me, where to look, to draw, and like, the clear community values, because we have a lot that are competing. And, you know, are we, is Picking County only open to the highest bidder? Do we have concerns about equity when we look to our future? You know, do we, are our levels of consumption for more recreation, more home construction? You know, is that out of balance with the standard, the quality of life that we want for ourselves and people who live here? You know, are the essential qualities that define the Upper Roaring Fork Valley and make it extraordinary, are they still shared? You know, do we all still agree on what those essential qualities are? And, you know, I've looked at just the topics that we've been debating, and, you know, land use to me is very clear, we sort of have our land use boundaries, other places have their land use boundaries, but, you know, we have tools that we've used that have worked really well. I also think we've seen conversations come up about, do these land use tools continue to work well? You know, we, we have ideas about improving the TDR program, or asking, is it still, you know, living up to its promise? But there's other issues too, that, for me, really beg for a bigger community conversation about how growth is sort of underlying in an undercurrent for topics that we're talking about, like climate change and affordable housing, pressures on our transportation system for increased use, our roads, Rafta. We've, we're hearing about the airport, about, you know, the airport should be just big enough, but what is right-sized? What does that mean for us? You know, our, the recreational growth and sort of competing values that we have even in our programs for recreation and wildlife protection. So, you know, I would, I don't know, I think it would help me to open up a conversation about this topic with your support, and, you know, draw on our great staff expertise to ask them to present us with a way of how we might convene such a renewal of this community conversation, in ways that they might think we could really have a valuable, and I think, broad discussion with our municipal partners and our community about, you know, what are our essential values on this topic, and, you know, what can we look to when we're looking at individual policy questions to carry us forward in the next decades?
But can I, I, I think this is a worthy thing to be looking at. I just don't know how we can fine-tune it for staff at this point, because what you said is a twenty-year discussion that we've been having for twenty years and twenty years prior to that. So, I think, I think trying to convene this, bring in the partners, because we can't do it without the municipalities, without the US Forest Service, without the transportation systems, without all those people at the table, because we've seen that already, what Picking, we can't, we only have so much control over the fringes of areas that are really, I think, stimulating a lot of growth, both in all aspects, commercial, residential, the size of homes, the impacts of the community coming from the municipalities, and coming from the down-valley jurisdictions and the mid-valley, which is kind of still portions of the upper valley. So, it's because, you know, we're going to see that, that discussion tonight with Eagle County, and then when they move forward with the tree farm, that's a huge, that was a huge hit to what we believe in as some, you know, growth issues, especially sustainability for all of our services in the mid-valley, in the valley region as a whole. So, I, I just don't know, I think it's, I think we should start the discussion and find out how we can try and get the discussion going, and then look at the topics of the discussion, because it's going to be across the spectrum.
And I tell, I mean, I have more questions than answers, and I know there's a lot of people who have debated these things for long periods of time.
We have to look at staff time and availability, because, you know, we have issues in community development, they have a project ongoing right now that we need to see to completion, I think. But that doesn't mean we can't start thinking about where we want to go in the next phase. And, you know, I think a lot of things would come up with this energy issue, and, you know, the house size issue, and the climate change issue, and the infrastructure impacts of, of all of these things. So, I, I think it's a conversation we need to have, we just need to kind of sit down with our staff and say, how can, how can we start, start the process, start getting there? Because, like you said, you brought up so many issues, I'm like going, okay, take a deep breath, where, how do we begin this, and where do we want this to go?
Jordan?
Yeah, I, I, it is complicated. And we are, we have been touching these on different segments, as you said, Kelly, so, from the airport, trails, housing is going to be an issue for us when we look at fill-ups, the master plan for recreation for the ski company. So, for me, it seems like, and, and, and ComDev is already doing some work for us based on the energy code, which will lead into land use codes. It seems like, and, and ComDev has also had, they've got great information, as all the caucuses have updated, for the most part, their master plans, they've been able to provide those caucuses what total build-out looks like with each, each of those individual caucus areas. So, ComDev has a lot of information. And it seems like we almost should have, perhaps, look at like a mini retreat, so just for us to get together, try to gather some of this information, and see what our values look like.
That's a good idea.
I know that would be really, I mean, for me, very valuable.
John, can you just put twenty minutes on the next Tuesday's agenda?
So, when you look at a future agenda, so, you know, how long would it take to, you know, who, who'd be the players? Who would be the staff people that would be coming in to provide us with some information, or at least an update? And then, you know, what sort of timeframe would be available? Is it late summer, early fall, or...
Yeah, I, I think for an initial conversation, and to just kind of get an understanding where you all are at, and informed with some information, that's something we could probably do sooner. Probably, June is getting pretty full, but, you know, I, I would see late summer, early fall, and, and we're fortunate in that we have done a lot of work that we can leverage. You know, whether it be through the, the airport project and build-out. I, I think a lot of what is driving this, I've been thinking about this a lot, because as Kelly said, this comes up in almost every discussion, whether we term it as what's our carrying capacity, or how big do we, you know, how big is too big, or when is big, whether it's transportation, or the airport, or affordable housing, or what have you. So, it's been coming up. And so, we've got some good baseline data, and I think some of the things that we've learned is, hey, there's been disruptions from when we last had this conversation about growth. Vacation rental by owners, you know, is a, is a good example of, you know, development that's now more intensely used, and maybe is, while, while we may not be seeing more bricks and mortar, we're seeing more intensity of use and, and feeling of growth. And I think to get some of that data on the table for you, which I think we have readily available now, and start to get some ideas of where you sit as commissioners, and, and where the conversation can go, that would help us tee up what I think is going to be a longer and more complicated conversation with our various partners in the community who are also wrestling with this, whether that be our municipalities, our federal agencies. I could probably list more, but they're just not coming to me right now.
But you're right.
Those are the obvious ones, yeah.
And then, we can bring back maybe a, a broader game plan for that, that more complex conversation, really going into, to 2020. And, and really making sure that we have resource asks on the table, you know, whether that be study, I, I don't know what that is yet, I think... whether that be study, I, I don't know what that is yet. I think we need some time. But it may be a yes and that we can have, you know, this nearer-term conversation. So let me get with Steph and, um, and then come up, use that to leverage a, a longer-term game plan. So I do think this is probably a twelve to eighteen-month conversation, I'm thinking. Um, if, if we're doing it with partners and, and we can do something nearer-term with you guys. So let us work on it.
And I just want to check in with you guys.
I'm Steve. I want to let Steve go first, but yeah.
Yeah.
Sorry, I cut. Sound good? I've been talking to, you know, some, some of the, it was the Transportation Committee that had convened, was it Tom Melberg and those guys a couple of years ago, various committees. I've, you know, Bill Kane and others, I, I've talked to them about trying to envision it. What are we going to look like in, in 2040, twenty years out? You know, a lot of our, our plans were going on, we're nineteen ninety-two, or, or, you know, we're twenty years out, and it seems like we'll start thinking about 2040. Maybe just put the number up there, uh, and, and wonder, you know, think about where we want to be then. And, uh, John's corrected me many times when I've talked about carrying capacity and realizing that our carrying capacity in this valley physically could be hundreds of thousands of people compared to Singapore or something. And, you know, you could have twelve million people in the valley between here and Glenwood. So maybe the, or between Basalt even. Uh, so there's kind of a desirable and a sustainable capacity, you know? If we're going to try to be conscientious regarding carbon emissions and climate, uh, is there a sustainability capacity? Or maybe it's just a desirable capacity, which might be a lot lower than that. And it kind of has been. But I, I really welcome that conversation. I think it's exciting and it's, I'm grateful that you brought it up because it's a daunting one and, and you said it so beautifully just now. I hope you can play back the tape, get that written down for us, you know? Thank you.
It feels very clumsy, you know, it feels like a big question.
Well, it's huge. It's like trying to describe an elephant.
Yeah.
Also, thank you. Thanks for bringing that up. I appreciate it. Uh, um, so was that future agendas or board open discussion? That was board open discussion.
I have a little open discussion.
Yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, this, this one is just, I just don't know where to put it. And so I'm saying it because I don't want to forget that I've said it, so remind me if I say it again. Um, and thinking about, I've had some concerns from people in rental affordable housing through the APCHA program who have to re-qualify and they've made income increases, and they're going to get thrown out of their units because of their income levels. But I'm like, well, I don't know how we can address that, except for the fact that maybe we could bring into the mix allowing people to deduct upon proof, evidence that they have health insurance plans. Because the cost of health insurance, people either pay their rent, they buy food, they buy health insurance, they pay their car insurance, you know, people are having to make choices with the cost of healthcare going up. If we could bring that into the mix and allow them to deduct it from their income upon proof of what their premiums are. Because in a lot of cases, that would keep people in their rental units, because right now they're paying so much out of their income. I don't think they're allowed that now. I think it's just.
I can't remember. I know, I know.
We have some exemptions. We'd need to look at the guidelines.
Yeah, I'm not sure that's in there, but I think that's something that, I think we should think of in light of the fact that we're trying to make strides into reducing the cost of premiums, just holding them at the level, but reducing them, because the levels there right now just are putting people so far out of pocket that some of them cannot, cannot afford to eat or pay their utilities, and we're seeing that. So I'd hate for those people to not get any credit for buying health insurance to allow them to stay in their units, because I think that's something we might be able to do for them. I just don't want to forget to bring it up.
No, I think, I think that's good. I think that would be good for, uh, for the, the new.
The new board.
APCHA board and, and the other, the other thing to look at, I, that I've brought years in the past, is the, the other side of the equation, people who, who don't, can't qualify, even though their income works, because they've got, uh, assets that include retirement accounts and they're being penalized because they've had the foresight to, to put money aside for retirement or for, for colleges for the kids, so.
So those are issues, but I just didn't want to, don't let me forget it. Okay, guys? Thank you.
Anyone else over here, can you send? Board, open discussion? I wanted to bring Kara up, uh, if you want to come up.
Just a reminder that Steve and I will be out next week.
Right.
We will miss you both dramatically.
I'll be gone one of those days too.
We'll miss all of you. We're going to have more fun, guys.
Nobody will be here.
And then when do you leave? The week following?
Regarding open discussion, I know we had some letter requests out there. We have a Club Twenty letter that circulated this morning, our, uh, response to Club Twenty. Um, and then, uh, we had a couple other things too. I've finally figured out where I am.
Is this the letter to Club Twenty graciously thanking them for writing a letter about the COR Act when they said they wouldn't write a letter and take a position?
Yes, it's that letter.
I, I read it, yeah.
I didn't see it. Do you have a copy?
Yeah. I have other copies too, if anyone wants.
Yeah, yeah, I thought it was great. I thought it was really well done.
And you had shared it with Rachel as well, and so she gave some back-and-forth edits on it as well.
I'd be ready to sign it.
Okay.
Patty should certainly read it.
Good job.
And then the follow-up is that we are, I have reached out to Senator Bennett's office based on your guys' discussion of a follow-up, um, letter to the delegation in support of the COR Act and addressing the issues that Club Twenty brought up in their letter, kind of refuting those. So that will be coming once I hear back from Senator Bennett's office.
Great. Um, you know, also we had the other thing that this county climate coalition, they wanted to know if we were going to be a signatory to the Paris Accords. And we realized, I haven't read the entire Paris Accord, and I'm sure it sounds like a great thing, but how do we proceed on that? Do we want to sign on to their commitment, or do we just want to affirm our own? And I'm looking for suggestions.
Was that coming from, uh, C, CC4CA? Not CC4CA.
Another group called the Coalition of Climate.
The Coalition for.
Not, not a group that we're a member of.
Correct.
Oh, okay.
I'm, I'm comfortable not signing on to it. I think we, we know our position. And if it had come from one of the organizations we're directly related to and if we all had time to read the, the Paris Accord, um, I think it'd be different, but.
Let's share what we have with them.
I don't have anything.
Oh, we don't have a something, oh.
All I have is the website that basically is signing on to the Paris Accord.
If I could make a suggestion, I, I think it's difficult for staff to advise, because the Paris Climate Accords are really complicated. They're big. But I do think there's probably some overarching goals that are consistent with this board's values. One of the things that we've talked about is maybe doing a, a more generalized resolution, kind of summarizing the board's position on climate change issues. And it may be appropriate for us to, um, conclude that, um, perhaps at our next regular meeting. And then we could, um, without necessarily signing on to something we don't know, we can affirm our commitment to, to climate action by sending these groups a, a more.
Yeah.
Generalized resolution that you guys really, a, and we understand. Um, I, it, it's just, I, I don't know how to advise you on, on that.
Right. So I, I think we'd be preparing a draft. You have enough direction to do that.
That would be helpful, because we could use it.
Everywhere.
Yeah.
Every time a request comes in, because we are getting a lot of requests.
Right, and it may be appropriate. We can look at the overarching kind of emissions goals that, that were there, and, um, those may be perfectly, uh, aligned without getting into the minutia of the house.
Right, I think, I think.
Is there anywhere you can find like a brief summary of the Paris Accord?
No doubt, no doubt.
Could you let me know if there's a?
Yeah.
I will look for the Cliff Notes of the Paris Accord.
It is difficult for us to know again, though, if those have been vetted and are, are accurate. But we can try and get a summary.
I would just like to read it just so that I had a better understanding of just anything.
We'll try and find one under twelve hundred pages for you.
Steve?
There were, at the Earth's Call Conference, they kept referring to goals, goal number four, goal number twelve. Those were all goals from the Paris Accord. So there, there is a list of, an action plan that is at least part of what the Paris.
How many goals are there?
I have no idea, because I haven't.
Four thousand two hundred and ninety-seven.
Read, I haven't read it either. I've read summaries of, that's all.
That would be great if you could.
Um, okay, so.
This letter's great too.
Okay.
Are you okay with the letter?
Oh, definitely.
So we'll sign that and fire it off.
Well, that's very well-written.
Yeah, nicely done.
About the, this letter to Club Twenty, I really like it a lot. I'm just thinking about how the San Miguel County letter was kind of an ultimatum, like, do this or we're not going to play in your ballgame anymore, sort of a thing. And ours is more like, we want to be at the table, we want to discuss this and try to ma, make it better in the future, and I like that approach. I think it's a much more positive approach and probably would be more effective than San Miguel County's approach.
It's what you guys asked for, so.
Thank you. Um, uh, uh, so, next thing I have on my list, very briefly, um, I just wanted to make an announcement. I know the, uh, the Wildlife Rehabilitation Center, which we support through our Healthy Community Fund, uh, has taken in baby bears and baby mountain lions, and they are looking for meat. They need meat. Uh, and so they put out a request from the entire valley. If you have old meat in your fridge, they can't do pork or sausage, but they can, uh, but they'll take anything else, you know, chicken to beef to elk to. So I want to just put the word out, um, and I, I think my daughter will encourage me to put together a collection with a big cooler and, and haul it down there, so.
Do they have a, do they do roadkill? Don't they do?
They do roadkill, they're, they.
Those animals should have been well-fed this year.
Well, unfortunately, the roadkill is contingent upon getting there in time and not, uh, you know, the intestinal sack not being broken and all this other criteria.
I thought those guys had eaten anything, those bears and those mountain lions.
Anyway, so they're trying to, they've got a bunch of mountain lion cubs down there, and they've got to feed them, okay? Uh, the last one is, um, regarding the five G. Uh, I'm starting to get mails from people and see articles about the potential danger of five G technology, not only on, for energy use. I've heard multiple things, but one, one group at the Earth's Call was saying five G was actually an energy-efficient way. That's the next generation of wireless. It'll be much less energy consumptive, which doesn't make sense to me, but that's one of the claims that was made. Uh, then the other claims are all about health, you know, the mental health consequences of, of, um, all these microwave antennas in your neighborhood, on your block, you know, spraying us with microwaves or, you know, short wavelength. Um, not sure if they're microwaves technically, but, um, it'd be nice if we just take a look at that and, and see if there's anything we want to say, because there's a growing concern about that.
We have, in the original, um, when we brought that ordinance forward, the research relying on American Cancer Society, I believe, um, was kind of the most reputable. That still is saying there's nothing specific to five G, but as far as radio waves.
In general?
In general, that there's, it still is safe and, so we haven't seen anything.
So there's nothing different from what we're already being, okay, well, that's good to know.
So that's, that's what we found. I know that there's other, um, perspectives out there, but as far as like hardened in research, that still is what we found thus far.
I think most of our concerns, if I remember correctly, were just the, the collection of towers and placement and cluttering our space and our view planes and our, and the maintenance of those. And what happens when they didn't use it anymore? Would all those towers just be abandoned there? I think that was one of our biggest things, the, the ability to avoid local land use.
Right, just to bring it back, uh, you know, there was a, almost a federal preemption issue where, um, you know, the, there was a broad grant of authority, um, with limited opportunities for local governments to put in, um, land use considerations and such that typically would apply, uh, to the, these types of tower developments. And so we had a limited window to put in place, um, both requirements and review criteria for these, uh, five G towers, and those were FCC regulations.
And we did so.
That, that came through, and we did, we did do that. Um, we are, um, one of the, the countries that, whose, um, federal government is, is now taking on the role of trying to fast-track the, the, uh, development of, of five G infrastructure. And so, um, I, I think there is not a lot of conclusive study. I'm not sure there's a lot of specific study, um, either, and that may be a, a more reasonable position to, to take, that as this technology is rolled out, yeah, we need to account for study or of health impacts and, and those sorts of things. But there's nothing out there right now that would confirm the health impacts that we found.
Absolutely. You found, okay, that's, it's good to hear.
Doesn't mean they don't exist.
Right, but it's good to know that, I know you considered it, but I just wasn't sure where we stood. Ubiquitous Wi-Fi already.
Exactly, yeah.
It'd be nice to get an idea on really what's true about the energy efficiency of it, because I don't, I'm not sure, you know, if they, if, if one five G unit is only eighty percent the energy use of your typical tower, that's great. But if there are five hundred of them, as Steve points out, that's no savings there. So, I guess just thought I'd bring that up. Um, uh, okay, I think.
I, I had one more open discussion. Do you, are you done?
I had one more, sorry. Um, was just that there's a request from the Mountain Pact, uh, to sign on to a letter for fully funding Land and Water Conservation Fund. As you guys recall, it was, um, it did pass Congress to, um, for it to be permanently authorized, but there's no funding for it. So now Mountain Pact is just asking for the board accounting commissioners to sign on, which is in alignment with past policy, but just wanted to make sure you guys are all on board with that.
Comfortable with that, and if we need a letter or?
Nope, they have a template letter. We're just.
We're going to sign it?
Yes.
Okay, we're all okay with that?
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, that was quick.
And just to let you guys know, part of, uh, the retreat follow-up, um, we are in discussions with Holy Cross Energy about potentially doing a, um, power purchase arrangement among the new programs that they were just rolling out, I think, when they were talking to us, that would put all of our county facilities, uh, that are on Holy Cross Energy. So that would include the airport, which is our largest power user, on renewable sources. And so there will be an additional expense. Uh, right now, that additional expense is looking very reasonable. Um, somewhere in the neighborhood between twenty-five and thirty thousand dollars a year, uh, to be on those renewables. So, uh, we'll be bringing a proposal in, in front of the board once we conclude that analysis. Just wanted to let you know that we are looking at those programs and, uh, it's looking like we're going to be making a recommendation in the near future to move to those.
Well, that was brought up today, Agra, actually, somebody was applying the city of Aspen for leading the way with being all renewables with their own electric department. And then Glenwood Springs is coming on, I think, shortly.
That's correct.
And they were talking about how many municipalities or governments within the state of Colorado. So I think it'd be great to join forces, you know, in other words, if we're going to talk, walk the talk, if we're going to talk the talk, we need to walk the talk?
Yeah, so the difference between what we're doing and looking at is we're not a utility provider.
I'm saying still.
But it, it allows us to participate in Holy Cross moving that direction and enabling them, uh, to, um, meet the ambitious goals that they have laid out. It will not remove, I think, our future plans to continue to look at onsite generation and, and storage, both for, um, kind of that one-third, one-third, one-third goal that, um, I'm trying to remember which presenter, uh, brought, brought us to that, but having some, uh, locally-produced energy, some renewables from elsewhere, having some storage, uh, for resiliency. We'll still continue to look at those, but this is a good interim step to.
Mr. Head, Holy Cross guided our retreat.
It was Brian Hannigan, yeah.
That's great, yeah.
So at any rate, uh, just to let you guys know that we're in that process and we should be back to you soon in case you get questions.
That's, that's exciting and, and resiliency is the, the word of the year, I think, so. That's great. It's great to hear that, that progress. Okay, uh, having finished that, I think we're up to department updates. Jody Smith is here.
All by yourself today. No staff, Jody?
No. Jody Smith, Facilities Director, and this is really going to, going to turn into more of a project update. And then, um, our internal services, uh, will be joining that group on, uh, July, I think, sixteenth, and will give the whole department update at that time.
Excellent, thanks.
And I have lots to tell you.
So you don't have an hour for us today?
No, you're going to get out early.
No, and you, when you, while you're doing that, I want to tell you, I walked through the courthouse. It was awesome.
Do you like the floors?
The smell, the creaking when you walk in, it's so cool.
I like the smell.
The floors are beautiful.
It's been fifty years since it looked that way, so you remember.
The old commissioner, the old commissioner meeting where you walk in, I mean, you look through the door and it's these beautiful blonde floors. It's really, it's pretty cool. The creaking is the best.
I don't really have any, um, really exciting pitches. I don't really have any really exciting pictures for you today. I tried to upload some and I wasn't having very much luck. But basically, I wanted to give you an update kind of on several projects and several opportunities that we're, we're doing in the county. So, this says courthouse renovation project, that's only one of the topics today. I'd really like to talk to you about the Health and Human Services, which is the, uh, uh, human services and public health renovation and kind of the moving pieces and parts of that, and then the jail basement secure area project, which we've kicked off. So, that's kind of what I'll be talking to you about today. Again, I don't have any fancy or exciting pictures for you.
Except you have that beautiful picture, that beautiful face of the courthouse.
That's right. So, the Picking County Courthouse project, if you recall, when I was here on May ninth, we talked about some concerns that the Ninth Judicial District staff had about being in the building during construction. They were concerned about noise. We gave them a tour of some alternative spaces. They met with the contractor and discovered how, we gave them the, the construction schedule and how that impact would work. And then they went off and met, and they all decided that they wanted to stay in the courthouse during the construction. So, the one question that they did ask is that both of the judges would like to have an alternative space for that quiet planning time, or, you know, if they need to do some phone work. And they wanted South Side. So, as you recall, we purchased a building down in Basalt for the audience. And we do have a very small conference room there. We'll just lock that room down during that time for them. And that seems agreeable to the county. There's not gonna be that much of an impact for it. And they were able to do that during the abatement project, so they were, somebody was down there at least one of the days.
That sounds great.
Yeah, so.
Save, save gas and time, too.
Yeah. Yeah, it's got a nice, it's got a good video, you know, screening, so they can do some, some remote work. So, that's kind of where we are with that. The old dispatch center, which I call now the Jail Annex, will become the construction office for FCI. So, they'll just move into that and then they can manage this.
They'll move back into there.
They'll move back in there. They also were awarded the jail basement project, which will be happening probably around the same time. So, they'll kind of have a, a win-win there, so they can handle both of those on campus. We did complete the Phase One of the abatement, so we got the lead and the, and the asbestos out on the main level. We had no noise complaints. All of our clearances came back every single day. It was super smooth. The courts did not use the jail annex for the, for arraignments. There were no arrests that week, but it was nice having it there and ready for them. And probation did get moved down to the garden level, although Roger, our probation officer, came down. He has an illness of some sort, so he's in the hospital, so he hasn't quite occupied the space yet. But we've been working with Joe, the Chief Probation Officer, and they're gonna start to backfill that and, and get them set up downstairs, so, so our wishes are to Roger and his speedy recovery. And then I do have the space reserved for Alpine Legal Services to move in in the next coming months. They'll be moving into that same suite. They have an office. We put a full door there. There was only half a door, so we're getting ready to move them. And then, once FCI is onboard, we'll be building a, and this is the old APD Administration Office, that front area. We'll be building a wall where the, the administrative people used to sit, and that will become the temporary jury room. So, so kind of that was our only missing link that we didn't quite have cooked, so. So, it seems like everybody's agreeable and, and everything's going well. As soon as we have our construction schedule a little more defined based on our permit issuance, we will start to work towards getting the Phase Two abatement and getting staging and all of that ready. The sheriff was able to open the Administration and Sheriff's Office Sallyport down in the basement back here. So, that has been open about maybe two and a half weeks. So, the APD, the SO, they're using it to transport detainees up into the jail. It's working great. They're starting to use the interlock between the admin and the, or the sheriff's office and the Aspen Police Department on both levels. So, we're starting to see that function start to work. So, the Sallyport back here is now closed. It's not being used for, to bring inmates in or any arrestees. They're not using it to bring their mills in, so everything, that's all going back to the operation that it was intended for. So, that's it. Any questions on?
I have a question on the courthouse. Did we make space for the public defenders?
The public defenders, yes. There is space. So, I talked to the Ninth Judicial about this and they are, there are four different private client attorney rooms that they can use any one of those. And then the other question that came up a lot was, are we finding a place for the pre-trial? John, is that what it's called? Pre-trial person?
Yeah, sorry, so.
Before we leave the public defender space, I thought we were gonna allocate them some of their own space, not to have them moving from office to office to office, to meeting room to meeting room to meeting room. We kind of forgot them in that first planning?
No, it's not in our obligations for the courthouse.
Discriminatory. So, if you have a private attorney, it's different than when you have to be represented by the public defender. But if that's the best we could do, I'll just say, I wish we could've done better for the public defenders.
Well, and it's a, it's a, it's a, the nice thing about the way this has been built again, or not built yet, but design, is that we have flexibility. And so, if we really find that X isn't working, we can look for a new.
And give them designated space. I just feel like they kind of always get the bum deal, and I thought it would be. When we were redoing this, I thought we should go out of our way. So, let's just see how it works and I will keep my eye on it.
I did talk to a public defender this morning and he was happy to know that he had four different places to go to. Rather than, I mean, right now, the challenge is, is that they have to use kind of whatever's there.
I see them on the benches in the courthouse, hallways.
Right.
Right, and that will not be the case going forward.
I just wanna make sure that we reach out, 'cause I just think that, you know, we, we seem to accommodate others, and I thought, so let's just see how it works. And if an issue comes up, we'll see what we need to do in the future.
And then the, the space that Jody is referring to, we increasingly find that in, in all areas, case management is extremely important, both for keeping people out of the jail that don't need to be in there, and, and for preventing recidivism. And so, we're, we're finding space, really, we've got a jail-based case management program. We also have a pre-trial program, which is monitoring folks who have been deemed low-risk and would otherwise be taking a space in the jail that, that don't need to be in there, but still need to be monitored. We're, we're trying to combine some of those case management resources into one position and provide, they do need some private space also, and so.
Well, yeah, so can they not use one of those offices, those four other spaces that?
We did find space for.
Yeah, so that was our idea, was to give them one of those spaces, but that would've kind of eliminated space for the public defender and others that need it. So, we're actually are gonna put them in the same suite as the staff kitchen and the Alpine Legal Services. And then that would come back to you guys as a lease, just like we do out at, out at Health and Human Services and Alpine. So, it kind of fits with that structure. And then we kind of took out that waiting room area, so that they're not kind of mixing.
Great.
Questions? The Health and Human Services, oops, I did a spelling error, sorry about that. So.
Removation. Look at that, she fixed it already.
She's good at fixing things.
So, the Health and Human Services, so Human Services and Public Health, we've been working with them for several months to provide a suite or a space that they can better occupy and have functions. There's still gonna be three different places within the Human Services Building. But, so we've been working on a design that would work, and we've gone to the modular furniture and modular system walls, just like we have in this building with glass and openness, so that they will really kind of fit in better with what has happened here that's been successful in this building so far. So, that project, we've got our permit in. We're expected to start on August first. Our budget is in alignment. It will, that has gone to Stuart Custom Builders. There's a six-week construction time. We are moving them out of the suite. So, this is the suite on the main level in the, in the Day Center wing. We don't really call it that anymore, the West Wing. And so, we are going to be using two of the touchdown desks for the six weeks. They'll be assigned to South Side, those two. So, we'll still have one touchdown space that people can come and go with. They'll be, I think Nan is moving upstairs. And then Community Development will be using one of their, that small private room that they have in there. It's in the back, it's very small, but Karen and her assistant will be swapping on that one. So, we have places for them. I'll just, in the next several weeks, I'll be working on a moving plan, a schedule, a communication plan with them, also working with them on how do we let their customers know where they're at, those kinds of things. And then probably storing their furniture, anything that will be coming back in. We are reusing a lot of their furniture, because we already had some systems there. So, we went with the same vendor to save money, but then adding on that. We are also creating a new shower. Here's the picture, here's the, we're, we're creating a new shower area. So, this is the front door here. This is the suite that we are fixing, or that we're building for them. We're taking out this hallway bathroom. We're knocking out these walls here and then creating more of an open plan with the system walls, all sliding glass doors, so it doesn't take up a bunch of room. They will have a receptionist, which they never really had in that suite. They'll have a touchdown space here for some of their, if environmental health or somebody is there for a few days. We're moving this hallway door down to, back into this area so that, that it will kind of separate this entrance here that's used by detox and the Day Center. And then the other thing that was really important was to get, get a restroom, an accessible shower restroom in for the Day Center. So, right now, this is a laundry room and this is a very tiny little bathroom in this conference room. So, we are going to take up that space, combine it, and create a shower room that the Day Center clients can go in, take their shower. We have a stackable washer and dryer that go right next to it. And then we haven't really impacted any of their other space, so.
The new shower and bathroom can handle the capacity?
Yeah, I think we will still have this restroom over here. We need to, we need to give it a facelift. It's in pretty bad shape and we'd probably take that shower out.
Is there, is there a bathroom on the, if we lost a bathroom on the outside of the door that it's gonna move?
It used to be a public restroom, right, when you came in the door. The ladies' room was right around your corner.
Yeah, it's still right here, this restroom. So, the door will go probably right here where the, so that people can still get into the Day Center, which is right here.
No, the restroom, I'm talking about from the front door.
Oh, yes, that, the restrooms are right here.
They're still right there, okay.
And there's a men's room over here, and then there's more upstairs, so, yeah.
And, and Greg, I, I just wanna comment on the, the space at the Day Center right now probably is not adequate for the population that's being served. We are, that, that, that space probably needs to be significantly expanded. We don't have anywhere for it to go. We don't have an alternative right now. That is part of the conversation that's happening with the Housing Stability Coalition. You know, what other alternatives or partnerships or, or such may be out there. So, we'll be having those discussions in the future, but I just want, we're doing the best we can with the space that we have and to make it usable and, and right for the folks that we're serving there. But it is not an adequate space for our population right now.
So, it's undersized. It's, you're, so you're trying to fix, address this, but we're not sure that's gonna be enough?
Well, we, this is not gonna fix the space issue, but it will at least provide for better shower and sanitary facilities and, and clothes washing.
Great.
This room will remain as a restroom, so, you know, then they, but right now, they're, they are sharing this one restroom between detox and the Day Center, and it's quite a conflict because Day Center, or D-Sox needs to lock it down at a certain period of time for a certain amount of hours to do their drug testing, which is just not compatible. The other thing that we are, will probably come to the board eventually is, or maybe not, but detox's space just isn't adequate either. So, we might be moving them back upstairs where they were. That seemed to work better. And then, not sure what we'll do with this piece, but just, there's just, Human Services is just growing and all of these case managements are really difficult, so.
I just have to voice back, I'm, I know we need, there's things we need to do, but I have to be totally honest, I'm really tired of remodeling that building. I cannot tell you how many times I've been sitting on this board that we have remodeled that building. And we're gonna be, you know, in, in a year, you're gonna be coming back and saying, okay, now we need to, you know, move, you know, the detox up here and then we'll need to remodel the daycare center over there. We have, and that building has questions about its stability anyway, its structure when it was built. We've always been finding that. So, I would really hope that, to, you know, that we have some finality. And we just keep, you know, we just redid the building for public health upstairs and we, you know, redid all that. And now we're redoing all this, and it's just getting to be a lot. And then, you know, we keep hearing, well, we don't have enough room for this, we don't have enough. So, again, it comes down to Kelly's thing. When do we, we have at some point say, we can't fix everything all the time for everybody. We just don't have the resources. We don't have the space. And if we go to the community and wanna build more space, we get beaten up for that. So, I don't know, I'm just, can you tell I'm a little frustrated in, you know, hearing another remodel come back on this building? I mean, we've remodeled it till we're blue in the face.
So, one of the things that I would love to say that we're, we're putting out a pilot program, a little test that's starting probably around June tenth, and we'll be rolling this out more. But the old Connect One space at one twenty-three Emma Road, so that's the River Park Center.
Upstairs, back.
Yeah, so they have, they vacated and got a, a new place. So, we met with Public Health Economic Services and Human Services last week. And we looked at that space to say, could this be a hoteling type place for you guys to have more public hours down here? And when we talk about hoteling, it's like, it's more of like that advertising, okay, Mondays, environmental health is here. On Tuesdays, this person's here. On Wednesdays, you can come to an exercise class or whatever it is for the seniors. So, that space seems to be really adequate for them. I'm having, we have leftover carpet from this rooms, or from this building, so I'm putting that down. We have a leftover little small refrigerator, so I'm putting that in. We have some leftover chairs and the, the desks are already built in, so we're just putting those all in there. And we're gonna give that to them to start, they're working on some matrices. They're working on some success plans for you guys, so that they'll have data-driven information on how it's being used, how successful it is, those kinds of things.
But that's not gonna decrease our space needs in Human Health Services. It's gonna, we've tried touchdown space in Mid Valley. We, we rented space over where the Basalt PD is now, you know, and that worked for a while. And then, you know, the recession hit and we had to pull out of there and it just didn't work, so.
Well, there's, there's a couple differences, I think, with this, 'cause we, we had that discussion. Well, there's, there's a couple differences, I think, with this, 'cause we, we had that discussion too about, um, I think-
Done it before, we're doing it again.
Well, here's the difference, we own the space now, um, so it's not, it's, it's not a rental kind of, of situation.
But we could rent the space again.
Yeah, we could rent the space again.
So, there's that issue, we're gonna remodel it again, I just-
But the, the, the rub is, is we're making all of these incremental changes to try and adjust spaces that aren't meeting the needs, and so whatever becomes urgent in one service area tends to become important, we, we make the changes, and I agree with you, sometimes we're moving walls six inches, right, it's, it's, uh, it's, yeah. And so, we're, we're trying to get a sense of, um, are there services that could be permanently, or would make sense to more permanently locate, and other facilities that, that we currently own to take some pressure off of this building? So, you're not always trying to squeeze in, you know-
Johnny, it'll be back. We'll be, we'll be reworking that building.
So, is this pilot essentially a test to see maybe which of those departments this space might serve best?
Or a combination of.
Or if it serves.
But I think, you know, with Mountain Family Health there, there's some synergies, and there's some opportunities for the Human Services and that group to start to build some of those programs with them. And as you know, there's a, um, we have a shared meeting room in between Connect One and where they're operating, so, um, it's a big meeting room that holds like forty, forty-five people, that, that they could have some programs in there. The other thing that we're looking at, um, the other thing that is an opportunity that will come up in the next year, I, I think, is when Hope Palace, so they've been given their notice that we won't be renewing their lease, and that space will come back to the county, and could that space be a permanent connection with Mountain Family and Public Health or community, I don't know.
It's gonna be a huge renovation.
Huge, huge.
I don't even wanna go there.
So, we are trying to look at, to your point, Patty, I think we're trying to look at, are there some longer-term things we can do that gets us out of, the reason we're doing this, this building is not meeting all the needs in the community.
And we're, we're trying to cram so much in there, and, and it, it comes down to the growth to be, you know, I mean, we do have grow, growing issues with those in need in this community. How do we service them all, where do we service them all? But, you know, we also have a constituency we need to, we need to answer to is, when is enough enough? And where do we go from here, and how much more taxpayer dollars can we spend to remodel and remodel and remodel? And they're not gonna let us build a new building, we know that one, we've already been through that, especially in that neighborhood. So, you know, I think we need to look at long-term plan, and I guess we need to try it again, moving these, these office spaces to Mid Valley and see how they work there, and look to see how it goes. Just voicing the concern that we've done it before, and for whatever reasons, it didn't work.
Understood.
So, I would agree with doing, trying to do a long-term strategic plan on how best to use all of our, I mean, we have the South Side, we have the Mountain Family, the Stubbies Building, we have this space, how best can we accommodate everything and try to settle on more permanent solutions for long-term? But, I disagree with you, Patty, about, I mean, I would much rather do these small remodels, we're basically repurposing the space without building a new building, which would be-
Steve, I'm not, I'm not saying that, but these have not been small remodels, and we've been doing them multiple times over the years.
Oh, I re, I realize that.
That building is always under construction, it seems like.
But I think we're being prudent in using the space we have to the, to the best of our ability, and if it means doing remodels once in a while, then so, so be it, that's, that's still way, way cheaper than doing a whole construction project, a whole new building.
Well, and I'm guilty of saying, just like Patty, you know, we move a wall or two there every single year, you know, and, and I think, again, the purpose and the, you know, the test pilot that we went here with this building of doing movable partition walls and making those offices and, and creating a vision of, you know, making sure we have natural light and that it's, you know, workable space. I think that by not having drywall in here anymore, so in this space that's white, there is no drywall.
You can just roll things around.
So, right, it's, now we take a screwdriver and take the wall down, you know.
We tried that upstairs too, I think, and did Pink Noise and all that, that was the first, right.
And we're still doing that, right?
We're still doing it.
It's working.
It's working.
Yeah, okay.
But they're moving those offices again, so, yeah.
It's, we're, we're, we've got a space that's used by so many different entities for so many different reasons. You can imagine that it's gonna be versatile and in dynamic, and I appreciate what you're saying.
But just remember-
Needs building a new one, that's for sure.
Remember the, as part of this conversation we just had, we heard the daycare center is running out of space and it's gonna need something. We heard Detox is running out of space, it's gonna need something. So, we're looking at that now, and we're thinking, okay, we're gonna remodel the white space here, but we know, so we don't have a strategic, strategic pla, strategic plan for that building in itself. And I, you know, maybe that's something we need to-
Well, we, we are working on that, and if we had, i- if we, if the whole floor were white space, that would be different, but the, the fact is-
I feel like it is, 'cause I've been here so much.
I know, but the fact is, we've, we've built a lot of these walls, we have constrained, um, space, and so we're trying to figure out what are some really efficient ways that we can provide relief on that over time? And then, maybe the Day Center can ex, expand to an appropriate size, or, I, I don't know. But we're, we're working on that now. These initial experiments kinda give us some ideas of-
Initial experiments?
I mean, really, that's what they are. And, and trying to understand what would make sense maybe to utilize some of our Mid Valley.
And you also mentioned a new position, a new receptionist.
I, I don't think that, that's not a new position.
That's just part of Public Health, it's already- Is it already budgeted a new position, or she already's there, okay? 'Cause you know how I feel about, you know-
No, no, we're not creating a new position.
Long discussion about this impending recession today at Akron, I'm thinking, I don't wanna be the one in two years telling these people they don't have jobs. So, that's, that's how-
But they want to have construction.
That's all you got for it?
Well, just put 'em to work remodeling the building, and they'll all have a job for the rest of their lives.
At some, you better bring pictures, Jody.
I'm bringing pictures. No, I know that building, I don't wanna see any more pictures of that building. So, um-
Thanks, Jody, I appreciate your efforts, it's just jeepers.
Yeah, no, it's a tough one, and, and you know, and, and I'll just wait, make one last remark that, that I think, you know, when we, uh, created this building, it was for the nonprofits, and, um, and it was designated so-
And childcare.
And, and so, what's happening is I think, um, that there's less and less of the nonprofits in here and more of our own staff. So, as we move those, you know, if Public Health and Environmental Health end up, I mean, I'm just, for an example, Down Valley is a permanent space with just a touchdown up here when they need to do, then that frees up space in two different buildings. So, it's, you know, it's, it's an ever-moving puzzle for sure, and I've been here a long time, and the puzzle has not stopped.
Kelly and I want you to remodel it back into childcare again, we'll go for that.
Just one other thought, um, if we need a bigger Day Center, and if we look at different locations for that, um, thinking outside the box, the current ambulance building, um, maybe could be used for that. The, um, current senior center could perhaps be used for that, if we get a new senior center at a different location. That's looking more long-term, but we could potentially, like, get a way bigger space for the Day Center, then that frees up all that room in there for our, our various office needs. So, um, that's thinking much further down the road for those kinda things, but there are possibilities.
Yeah, tho, those are possibilities, I think there'd need to be a lot of neighborhood conversation, and the, uh, the, the current ambulance facility is not ADA accessible, um, so there'd need to be potentially, a, and it doesn't have, um, good access, um, either sidewalks and there's no parking, and so, there, it's, it's not, it's not really useful for much more than what it's being used for, or those types of activities that don't require a lot of, well, your customer or client, um, access, and so-
No fire sprinkler either?
Yeah, so, um, those are all things that we can look at, but, um, the, the assets may not be as valuable for those purposes as we think. And that's what we're struggling with, versus our building is ADA accessible, is sprinkled, is all of those things already. So, we're, uh, that's part of the puzzle, the challenging puzzle that we're, we're playing with.
I think Jody's good at puzzles.
Yeah, good, Jody's the one to, to do this, uh, good job. I, I had a, if I can change the subject very briefly, just a question, at one point, we had a, an audio noise coming into the, off of our sound system here, and somebody suggested it could be some wiring through an audio box or something that might be located in the basement or elsewhere in the building. Does that ring any bells?
That'd probably be for, um, to, to probably talk to Melissa Jodas out of bits.
Had it that one day, that one afternoon, but we haven't had it before during-
Well, and I, I heard it just again earlier today.
Oh, you did?
But it was only once, and it, it was quick, so-
It sounded like somebody rattling wires, you know, it's an electronic sound, but it sounds like, you know, a mouse chewing on something.
We're still chasing that one.
Somebody suggested, well, I think it's the Sheriff's Department's doing something down in the basement, kicking the box, or tripping over the wire.
Yeah, they're pretty far over, so it wouldn't be that.
There's nothing.
Just thought I'd bring it up, 'cause I'd heard that through the grapevine.
Yeah, I'll let, I'll let Melissa know, I'm gonna go on vacation tomorrow, so I'll have her fix it before I get back.
You're going to the beach?
Beach, we hope.
No, not quite.
How long you gonna be gone till like, uh, September fifteenth or something?
Well, August first, 'cause that's when all the projects start. Um, the jail basement, uh, security project, which is to build a secure evidence storage for vehicles. The project is, um, budgeted, uh, we did a design build, so we've hired, um, a contractor and a, um, architect. So, they have had a kickoff meeting. Right now, we're just at schematic, so we're just kinda putting the boxes in place to see what would fit. I do have, uh, the Facilities Operations Manager on that team, Ron Ryan, uh, with the Sheriff's Office, and Heather with the Sheriff's Office, 'cause she's the evidence custodian. So, um, we're gonna start working through that and see what happens, um, uh. It's kind of exciting to be able to think outside the box, even though it's a pretty confined box, it's a low ceiling, you know, and what we're up against on this is we're being compared against the beautiful APD evidence storage that they just built inside their new garage, where they have, uh, where they have, uh, tow ropes and, and, uh, pulleys and stuff that just pull a vehicle right in. So, we're, we're looking at all our options, instead of pulleys, can we get the, the carts that go under the wheels, and we can just roll the cars around, and, you know, so do it, um, very, um, uh, conservatively. We don't have to have all the bells and whistles, but to make it work for our deputies and for our, our evidence custodians. So, as my project updates come along, I'll, uh, give you guys a quick update on that, uh, each month, and just kinda let you know where we're at with that. So, so those are kinda my three projects.
And the next year, we take on the full jail remodel, right?
Actually.
Go a, go ahead.
So, we, we are going through, we're gonna be initiating a, a programming study to, to look at project future needs, and alternative, so future needs would be projecting the different populations that we're anticipating in the jail and, and the risks, and then, where do you invest from there? Is it in the physical infrastructure, is it in more case management services, services, or alternative kinda services? So, um, more to come, but we will be kicking off that kinda programming analysis this year.
I was hoping for next year, one more.
Well, we always like to have one more thing.
Well, and there's only six months left in the year.
Oh, yeah, that's-
Yeah, so it-
We won't probably get real much.
It will likely not be complete, it'll go into next year, but it should start to give us some, some ideas what the, the future needs really are.
And then, with that, um, I, eh, eh, part of the environmental commitment that we have is looking at what we can do for that building, um, as far as, uh, geothermal, or solar thermal, or solar panels. You know, we've got some pretty heavy-duty rooftop units on the jail, um, that are up for replacement, that we're kind of just holding until we know, uh, what we wanna do with that. I would hate to prematurely put a new chiller on there, and then we go, hey, we're gonna go up a story, 'cause we just don't know the answer to that, right? So, um, I already have the chiller designed just in case, uh, we, we have a problem that was done, uh, late last year, of just making sure it's designed in case it fails, because it would be something we wouldn't be able to just hold off on, uh, given our population, but, um, so that's what we're doing on that, is just kinda really looking at that. The other thing that I think is kind of exciting is that the City of Aspen, uh, reached out to us and have offered to, uh, have us participate with them in an irrigation audit. So, they are going to, um, audit the Health and Human Services irrigation systems and watering and plants and all of that, as, as well as the library, to just see how we're doing and can, how can we make, um, improvements. I didn't wanna do this building, 'cause we don't really have any lawn, and then back here, we're already designed in a wells program. The wells is a new city requirement, where you have to, uh, design for a certain kinda plant, a certain kind of irrigation, so we're already in that for, um, this back part of the building. So, I think, um, just kind of looking at those two buildings and just see what they find, and then if we need to add on to that for another property later, we can.
If they do an audit of those issues, will they then mandate that we redo the irrigation system, or redo the landscaping, or?
I don't think so, I think-
I would ask that question before, before, 'cause I don't wanna get us into something that we may not have in the budget or plan for.
Okay.
You know, I think we've planned pretty well on those issues already, but just a, just a heads up.
And I don't even know how much they can really do with the, um, ambulance, 'cause it's still under construction for a few more months. But that, you know, so that's still kinda messy out there, so, yeah, that's a great question, I'll ask 'em. But I really liked that they reached out to us.
There's some things we might need to do, there's some things we might not, we might want to consider, not be mandated to do.
Do you have a question, Steve?
Hmm.
I was just gonna say, on the jail, as, I'm not sure where the jail's going and, you know, what is going to change there, but as you're looking at the next phase of design, for, you know, certainly with energy efficiency in mind, you know, it could be that the need for the chiller is reduced dramatically if we are, follow some of the modern methods, pipe sizing and all that sort of stuff. And so, I'm just hoping everybody's aware of that going forward, that we, we may not need a big mass of chiller that we thought we needed last year.
Well, that, so I already met with Marty and, um, and then, uh, one of his solar consultants, and, uh, really talking about, uh, thermosolar, and, um, he thinks that we could cut our gas bill by eighty percent. And that is humongous, because those boilers run this building, and they run that building. And so, eighty percent is pretty big, and so-
There's only twenty percent to go.
Right.
So, didn't, didn't, we, we learned a lot from this building, when we looked at all those opportunities here that didn't necessarily pan out, but, so we have that data as far as this site, so we can also use that rather than starting from square one totally, right?
And, and again, I, I think we, we kinda put a hold on pursuing that until we understand what that programming study shows and, and if and what improvements we need to make there.
Right. Thank you. I think we're, is this it, is that the end of your?
Go, get outta here, go on vacation.
All right, we're done.
Okay, thanks, Jody.
Safe travels.
Okay, I think we're, unless there's something else, I'm gonna call this meeting done, thank you grassroots.
Okay, bye.
Four twenty-three, and we're out.
Thank you, Jody.
I'm just gonna go to Arizona.